This is the March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Concord City Planning Board. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll? That's you bet. Too quick to item number one.
Here. Member Savage?
Here.
Member Fox?
Here.
Uh, Member Rosenberg?
Here.
Councilor Chantley?
Present.
Vice Chair Foss?
Here.
Chair Woodfin.
Present. Excellent job. We recognize that, uh, that Beth is filling in for Heather Shank tonight as our clerk. Um, with that, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the February sixteenth meeting. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Minutes passed. We'll move on to item four in our agenda. Agenda overview. Um, we've got one item that's been pulled from the consent agenda, the State Street project, which is, Sam, help me out, what number, State Street?
Um, one twenty-five North State Street.
Yeah, well, what number on our agenda?
Five A.
Five A is being pulled from the consent agenda, so we will, uh, move on to our determination of completeness component here, which is item five, right, on our agenda? Determination of completeness, all right, so that brings us up to... So we'll do five A and five B individually, so no consent, right? So determination, determination of completeness for item five A. If we could read five A into the record?
Sure. Wilcox and Barton, on behalf of one twenty-five N S S L L C, request major site plan approval for construction of a three-story office building addition at one twenty-five North State Street in the Neighborhood Residential District. Staff is recommending that the application be determined complete, not a D R I. Recognize that we've received correspondence today regarding questions on the variance, but staff will be working with code administration and, um, to look into that, but still recommending to set the public hearing for April twentieth, pending review of that materials that came in today.
Okay, so item five A on your agenda, just for the record, we've got correspondence from, uh, looks like a law firm that came in late this afternoon regarding some questions on the variances, uh, questions on the variances that may or may not have expired. Staff has recommended that we find the application complete. They will investigate and look into any issues and concerns and address those in the public hearing. Uh, so again, for the record, determination of completeness components, uh, are not public sessions. We have item five A and five B on the agenda, so we'll be, uh, recognizing in public comments in next month's meeting. Um, so item five A, would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and set the public hearing for next month?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, moves us on to five B in the agenda, which is, uh, if we could read that into the record?
The John Flatley Company, on behalf of the City of Concord, requests major site plan approval to demolish an existing structure and construct a new multifamily residential building consisting of sixty-four units and associated site improvements at thirty-two to thirty-four South Main Street and the Central Business Performance District. Staff is recommending that the application be determined complete, not a development of regional impact, and to set the public hearing for April twentieth.
Okay, so again, determination of completeness, the staff's found the application complete, not a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and set the public hearing for next month?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Moves us on to item six in our agenda. Um, item six is design review, applications by consent. Any member of the audience have any concerns, questions, or issues with any of the items outlined in six A, B, C, D, E, F, and G that they'd like to hear? No? Any member of the board wish to pull any of these items off consent? So items on consent agenda are approved in whole. Uh, we have recommendations from Architectural Design Review that are taken into consideration on the approval, so those applications, uh, that are in the consent agenda will be done en masse and approved en masse. Uh, with that, would someone like to make a motion to, uh, grant Architectural Design Review application, uh, grant, grant, uh, design review applications by consent and approve items six A through G?
With A D R recommendations?
Pardon me?
With the A D R recommendations.
With A D R recommendations. Thank you, Lisa.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. That moves us on to the exciting portion of our agenda tonight, which is the public hearing section. If we could read item seven A into the record.
Advantage Signs, on behalf of Capital Fitness Center, requests A D R approval for the installation of a new non-illuminated window sign at eighty-five South State Street in the Urban Transitional District.
Okay, now, if record serves, Sam, if you can just fill me in on this, I believe A D R recommended tabling this because nobody was there from the, uh, from the applicant was not there, is that right?
Uh, yes, and they had a couple of questions about the signs. So the sign is a window graphic, uh, but the sign does span a window mullion, so they had questions about how that would be addressed in the sign.
That's right.
Um, so the, uh, sign installer has provided us with a revised rendering, and the relief from the mullion to the window face is very minimal. Uh, it's only a couple of millimeters. Um, so that has been clarified. Um, they had also had concerns about the presence of a web address underneath the sign, um, and that has been removed, um, as per A D R recommendations. I believe the applicant is in the audience if you would like to hear from him.
Well, I think that's probably fine. If there's anything else from the board, any other questions or concerns from the, uh, we can address the applicant with? If not, I'm satisfied with that. I'd forgotten that, uh, I think it was like five millimeters or something that they had said the mullion was super small. Again, the way it looked, it looked like it was wrapping over the mullion in the middle. Uh, so with that, if someone would like to make a motion to approve, uh, item seven A as outlined, and with A D R recommendations, and again, the clarification that we've gotten from Sam?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, moves us on to seven B in our agenda. If we could read that into the record?
Todd Roy, requests A D R approval for the installation of a new awning over a restaurant patio at seventeen Depot Street in the Opportunity Corridor Performance District.
Okay, could we get a update on this from staff? I know there was some concerns regarding right-of-way intrusions, uh, public, public space. So just for the record, this is, uh, I believe the Cheer, uh, Cheers, uh, the Cheers patio outside, uh, and the applicant wants to put a, um, two twenty-three by eighteen awnings over the patio that are shown in your packet. Um, there was some concerns regarding, uh, water mains, I believe, and other, other issues on the right-of-way. Again, this is city land, not private land.
Correct. Um, so the city actually owns the Cheers patio. Um, and so there's a license agreement standing, uh, with Cheers, and this has, this has been in existence for quite some time now. Um, so the applicant is proposing to establish a permanent canopy. I believe the fabric is retractable, uh, in, in the wintertime. Um, we have, uh, samples of the fabric, um, relative to the question of the water lines. Um, so there are some lines that go underneath the patio, and obviously when you sink sonotubes, you want to avoid the water lines. Um, so, uh, staff is comfortable conditioning approval on, uh, an engineered plan stamped by a structural engineer showing the position of the water lines relative to where the tubes will be set. Um, we understand that the applicant is working with, uh, his engineer to develop these plans. It's just, uh, a matter of time before we get them in, but that's why we're comfortable, uh, approving with that condition.
Okay, so, uh, staff's comfortable as far as, as far as making sure that there's some, something on the record that says that they're coming back to you with plans to show that no intrusions will be done or whatnot, as far as the sonotubes?
Yeah, the tubes will be sunk at a safe distance from the lines.
Okay, um, those samples are making their way around. Does anybody have any questions regarding this application? We can have the applicant come up if you like. If not... And you said they're retractable?
I believe that is the case.
Retractable. I actually can retract it.
Okay.
Okay, uh, with that, um, and again, A D R, did this go through A D R? It did, yep. Um, I believe the, the only suggestion was the awning be color, uh, be green, uh, darker than the roof. I believe that is present in the, uh, uh, in the samples provided. Um, and the posts be white or Quaker bronze slash brown?
Quaker bronze. I know that's a lack. Quaker bronze.
Yeah, I believe, yep. They had some, some, uh, some broad suggestions.
Okay. Um, okay, with that, uh, that was my only concern, is the notes from A D R, and then there's, there was some question regarding, uh, the city right-of-way, but if those were all taken care of, again, so any condition or any approval given would be under the condition that, uh, staff would be comfortable with the, uh, with the engineering report that you guys get back, okay? Would someone like to make a motion to approve that's as submitted with A D R recommendations, and again, the, the understanding that they'll be coming back to staff for approval with A D R, with that, uh, engineering elevations and drawings?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Good luck. Thank you.
Here.
Okay, you guys thought we were moving right along, and you beat to your, your agenda item here quickly. We'll slow things down just a bit here and, uh, read item eight A into the agenda.
Richard D. Bartlett and Associates LLC, on behalf of Penn and Cook Community Youth Center, requests minor subdivision approval for a lot line adjustment at seventy-six Community Drive and eighty-three High Street in the Neighborhood Residential District.
And Mr. Sargent, I did not mean to imply that you were gonna slow us, slow us down in any way, but not that you've been before this board many times. I, you're very judicious in moving us through our agenda, so welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Can we hold up? We have to do determination of completeness.
Oh, sorry.
Um, so staff is recommending determine the application complete. It's not a development of regional impact, and to open the public hearing.
Okay, so we have a determination of completeness component. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Carol got it first. Byron seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. We are open. Public hearing is open. With that, welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Well, good evening. My name is Mark Sargent. I'm with the firm of Richard Bartlett and Associates, and I might slow you down tonight because I left my glasses out in the truck.
Wow. What a rookie.
Maybe I can hold it like this.
We could put you down under the back end of the agenda if you'd like to come back after interchange development. You sure?
I'll suffer through it.
Okay.
So, uh, good evening. Um, the property that we're, well, there's three properties that we're speaking of this evening, uh, located at seventy-six Community Drive is the first one, identified on map fourteen twenty-four P as lot forty. It's the youth center building, uh, which is, see if I can get the, this lot right here, uh, has an area of point two-two acres with frontage both on Community and Dolphin Street. The second lot is just to the north of it. It's a vacant lot identified on map fourteen twenty-four P as lot forty-one, and has an area of zero-point-two-six acres. And the third lot, right over here, eighty-three High Street, map fourteen twenty-four P, lot thirty-eight, has an existing two-story building and a garage in an area of zero-point-three acres. So the proposal before the board this evening is to annex the vacant lot to the youth center lot.
So, I'm sorry, Mark, can you just roll over one, two, and three again for me?
Okay, so this is the, um, the first lot at seventy-six Community Drive. This has the existing building on it.
Yeah.
Community Center.
Yeah.
Second lot is adjacent to it, just to the north.
Yeah.
Lot Community Drive is vacant. And the third lot is located here on High Street, has an existing, uh, single-family home and a garage on it.
And where do those lot lines intersect? Where is that?
So, there's a lot line right down through here that divides the vacant from this.
Yeah.
And there's a lot line right through here.
Okay.
That, um, uh...
What's that other one to the right, to the right of it? So you got two, looks like you got two lot lines in there.
Yeah, there is two lot lines. This is, this is the existing lot line right now.
Okay.
For eighty-three. So eighty-three comes way up to here.
Yeah.
So what we're proposing is to shift that lot line down to the west.
Okay.
So it'd be here. So we're taking, uh, twenty-three hundred square feet of lot thirty-eight, and we're gonna annex that to both these two lots here. So that leaves lot thirty-eight with an area, it was originally point-three, it's gonna be point-two-five, no change in the frontage. In lot forty-one, which, um, was the community center, we'll now have a new lot area of point-five-three acres.
I got you. Thank you.
If you had any questions, be happy to answer them.
All right. Uh, any questions from the board? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns regarding this application? No? Close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, and we will move on to the report. So in your packet, uh, three-point-one is to grant minor subdivision approval for the lot line adjustment to annex point-five acres from map, uh, thirty-six Z, lot eleven.
Oh, it's the wrong.
Strike one. Give me the, give me the language and we'll put it in. Is that, uh, that's Reynolds Road?
I know. This happened last month.
Mark, could I ask you to come back up for a sec?
No, I have it right here.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, forget it. Sit back down.
We got it. It's just in the wrong part.
Okay.
All right, so it's annex the entirety of map one-four-two-four P, lot forty-one, and two thousand three hundred and six square feet from map one-four-two-four P, lot thirty-eight, to map one-four-two-four P, lot forty, in the Neighborhood Residential District.
Okay. Uh, conditions are the same, are right?
Precedent conditions.
So with precedent conditions, one through seven as outlined, would someone like to make a motion to grant that minor subdivision approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set. Thank you. Good luck with that project. And that moves us on to eight B in our agenda. If we could read that into the record?
Concord Christian Academy requests an amendment to a major site plan approval to allow the Pembroke Road access to be used for drop-off and pickup.
All right, so this is, uh, eight B on our agenda. We have no determination of completeness, no, uh, no issues other than opening the public hearing. Uh, welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
My name is Brian Burbach. Um, I am the headmaster at Concord Christian Academy for the last two and a half years.
Great. Okay, well, welcome to the table. Tell us what you wanna do here.
Absolutely. So, um, I came into the position two and a half years ago not, not knowing that there was a Pembroke entrance that was only approved for buses and for deliveries only. Um, obviously COVID hit, which turned us into a tailspin of trying to figure out how can we minimize contact within the, within the building, and so we created separate cohort entrances within the structure of the school. That, um, what we did is we allowed our parents to exit out of the Pembroke location, the Pembroke Road exit, and, um, which, uh, we were able to do that up until around the December timeframe in which we were minimizing that, because I, that's when I first got word that we were only supposed to be using it for two different, two different reasons. I met with the, I met with, uh, Beth and, um, and her team, and, um, part of, part of the issue is the, the cut, the amount of cut-through that we have through that location. Um, and, um, I, I have even pictures from today, um, of, of people who just go right around our cones, who go, um, actually ran over our cones in order to get through that location. We have cut that off to our community, but that has also caused a major issue in the front of our building because, um, that, that created a sort of a release for people to go out the back entrance. We had an accident in our front, in the front of our building, actually today, which is the first time, I think, in the school's history that they've actually had, um, an accident. We've increased enrollment fifty percent in the last, in the last two years.
Wow, good for you.
And so, and so it's been good for our community, but, um, what we're, what we're requesting, we, we've, we've put in for a, the Department of Homeland Security has approved us to be able to get one hundred thousand dollars worth of security features for our, for our building. One of that is actually the, the installation of a, of a fence and a gate, um, on our back property. Uh, but what we are requesting is if during, there's a two-hour time slot, let's say from, from six to eight, as well as in the afternoons, that that gate is real open, so that we can have our families, which includes, it's about six percent of our, our total population use the entrance and the exit on the Pembroke location or the Pembroke side of, of, of the property. And so that's what we're requesting today.
Okay, so I had some questions regarding this, and I, again, I think, uh, probably some, uh, some of the appetites to, to get this addressed was, uh, for some prior plans that had come before us on Pembroke Road. Um, we took some public testimony with, from, from people in the Pembroke Road area.
Totally.
Whether there's anybody here tonight or not, I don't know yet, but, um, that we're, you know, upset because people were using our cut-through and traffic was coming through, and what happened to the gate. So we had, we had put some pressure back over the code, I know, to, to try to look into it. So I'm struggling with the plan that's on here. It just, it's not very clear, but I, I, if you look at the plan, it looks like there's a, a red and blue line across the back, which I'm guessing is a fence, and then there's a kind of a cross-hatched, uh, across the, the driveway. Is that where the gate's gonna be?
That's where the gate will be, yes.
So there's plenty of room for a truck to come in, if a truck's gonna come in?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Not queue up on Pembroke Road, um...
There would be, absolutely. It'd be the size of a, at least a school bus.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And that red and blue line across the back is a fence, is that right?
That is, that is, that is a fence that's been approved by the Department of Homeland Security for installation.
And there's no gate there now?
There's no gate there now.
There was a gate there.
To my knowledge, I am not aware of a gate being there.
There was a gate there. I remember there. I remember driving around it. No kidding.
Okay.
No kidding. But there was, there was a gate there at one point. Okay, so any questions of the applicant? This is public hearing, so anybody in the audience wish to have a...
David. Just, I just wanna clarify with you that, if I remember when this came up a while ago, is that one-way, can they only exit that, well, on that road?
No, it is not.
Okay.
It is, it is a two-way road, um, because that would be for, for our buses, for example. If a bus comes for a school game, they, they come in and then they have to do a U-turn within, we have a large area right outside of our gym.
I see.
And then they would exit out the back door, or the back as well. And that is where Concord, um, Concord School District is supplying us lunches now. They enter there and then they go out the same way. Cause they, I, they're, they're, I would say they're approved as a delivery service.
Okay. And, and that, that's compliant with, with basically everything we need.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
And so the gate's gonna be the gate for the, for the paved surface, but you're gonna, you're gonna put something in.
There, there would be, yep. And, and another, another aspect of this is, we have, yes, not, well, we actually put out a pallet today.
Yeah.
Because people were driving around that. And I, my office sits up and I see people come through, and it's, it's quite sad. But I do believe that there is a, um, a Google Maps does take people right through our property.
Yeah.
Um, another issue, or another, uh, component to this is...
Oh, really? Directions? So directions on Google Maps take you right through the property?
Yeah.
Nice.
So a hundred and, um, we are in school approximately a hundred and sixty-seven days a year. So this is, this is, I mean, it's five days a week that we use the, the, the building, but also, um, throughout the summer and other months, we're not anticipating the sorts of volume that you would see for those hundred and sixty-seven days for the school year.
And the intent is to leave it down at those times, right?
Uh, leave the what?
The gate down?
The gate would be closed, yes. Yep.
Closed down.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Byron?
Thank you. Do I understand correctly, excuse me, that, uh, the, um, gate will be compliant with concrete fire department's requirements?
Absolutely.
All right, so they'll be able to get through if they need to.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any comments or questions from the audience?
We did receive an email this afternoon. I don't know, um, Braden Craggy, I don't know if they were planning to attend. No, they weren't planning to attend. I can read it to the record or pass it around?
Yeah, read it to the record if you could.
Um, so it's from Braden Craggy of ninety-one Pembroke Road. It says, "I am in a butter of Concord Christian Academy on Pembroke Road. I've read the project summary sheet for the site plan amendment and have a concern. As I'm not able to attend tonight's meet, tonight's meeting, I'm sending this email. My concern question is if a stop sign will be placed at the end of the exit. I'm able to see both the school's driveway and the intersection with branch turnpike for my windows. I have several close calls in, I've seen several close call, close calls in the area with cars leaving the school and coming from branch turnpike, because it's somewhat of a strange intersection, if you call it an intersection at all. I'm not sure if it is something that would actually help, but it seems like a stop sign would, on most occasions, force people to take ample time to see if any cars are coming off branch turnpike before they pull out onto Pembroke Road and cut across branch turnpike."
Branch turnpike. Branch turnpike's down from this, isn't it? It's not directly across.
It's kinda close.
No, it's, it's a cross. I would say it's, it's a cross.
It doesn't show it on there.
I did speak with our transportation engineer, Karen Hill, about, this email came in at four oh five P M, so I was able to talk to her. Um, she said it wouldn't be a city stop sign, cause it is on private property. I don't know if we can necessarily require that they put a stop sign. We can...
And if how can a stop sign on?
On their property.
On the branch turnpike side or on your side?
On their property.
Your property.
Pulling out of our property.
Pulling out of their property.
Pulling out of your property.
If it's on private property, it's not enforceable by the city. It wouldn't be a city stop sign. So it would just be something that it potentially could stop people, but it's not necessarily something. So if you would like to recommend it, but it's not something that we as staff can require.
Just refresh my memory, there's no wa, there's no sidewalk on that side of the street, right?
There's a partial sidewalk. There is a bus, there's a bus stop for, and, and there is a, like an enclosed bus stop for, for passengers.
On your side of the street?
It would be on our side.
Oh, it's right around from your entrance, from your entrance and exit. I'm not opposed to putting a stop sign. I don't know if you're opposed to this.
I'm not either.
So I, let's, let's add that in as a condition and we'll, we'll recommend that a stop sign be put in there and thank Mr. Or Mrs.
Craggy.
Craggy for their, for their input.
But just know that city cannot enforce- It's not enforceable, it's a private.
But again, it's just a, it's a recommendation and it's, again, making sure people see it to stop. Okay, with that, any other que, no questions or comments? We'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much for your testimony. Someone like to?
Can I, sorry?
Yep, go ahead.
You're breezing too quick.
I know.
So we did, can you sign in, sorry, before you leave the sign in sheet? So we had spoken with code administration because this is a code issue because they're required to have this fence. They are working with David Hall. David Hall requested, the code administrator, he'd requested we put an install by date just so that there's a date that he can work around. We had come up with May thirty-first, just a sort of, it's two months from now. I did hear from Ginny, who's the safety coordinator at the school, and she said due to the lag of which everybody knows is happening in the world of ordering supplies, it's about six months out. And with the federal funding, she said there's a certain timeline. They can't start the work until after a certain date. So she thought the end of August before the next school year would be feasible, just as far as all those sort of roadblocks that are put up. So I just want to change, if you're amenable to change that recommendation, and we'll notify David Hall that, to kind of keep that enforcement open until that date.
So if we, if we put that in there and then we could even make a, a recommendation that if we get past that date that you
Yes.
contact staff and staff can, can approve it from there.
So I would just change number three to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Okay. All right, anything else?
And then just add under somewhere to add a stop sign.
Put a, put a private stop sign in. Okay, so what, we'll read that in. So two point one in your packet is to grant approval for the amendment to a major site plan for Concord Christian Academy to allow for the installation of a gate, subject to the following conditions outlined in condition one, two, and three, with note that the date will change to August thirty-first, and a private stop sign will be added at the intersection with Pembroke Road. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that approval as outlined?
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Oh, Richard Bartlett again. All right, eight C, we'll read it into the rec, read it into the record.
Mark, be sure to sign in since we didn't tell you last time. Because we don't know who you are.
Richard D. Bartlett Associates on behalf of HDC, one ninety-two Loudon Road LLC, requests a minor subdivision approval for a lot line adjustment at one ninety-two to one ninety-six Loudon Road in the general commercial district. We haven't done a determination.
No. Yeah, we did the determination of this last month.
Did we?
Yeah. Oh, it says, doesn't say it on my note.
I know.
All right, so there is a determination completeness component. Staff has determined the application complete. You can open the public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been-
That is not a D R I.
Second and not at development regional impact. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Public hearing is open. If you could state your name for the record?
Sure. My name is Mark Sargent, and I'm with the firm of Richard Bartlett and Associates. Trying to get the plan open.
So I believe this has spun itself around several times, hasn't it, Mr. Sargent?
It has. Yeah, and you thought the last one is confusion. Wait until you see this one. But, so the properties are one ninety-two, one ninety-six Loudon Road. One ninety-two is the vacant lot down here, which used to be the old Boonway Theater. And one ninety-six is the Dairy Queen. And one ninety-two has an area of three point oh one acres with a hundred and seventy-two feet of frontage on Loudon Road. One ninety-six, as I said, the Dairy Queen and associated parking lot has an area of point nine one acres with a hundred and ninety-nine point four six feet of frontage. So currently, the lot line right now runs like right here, and then it kind of dives down, kind of angled back towards Loudon Road a little bit, and then back this way. So that's the Dairy Queen lot. That's one ninety-six. And then the one ninety-two back and has all this behind it here. So the vacant area and then the area that's actually part of the parking lot for Dairy Queen, which is part of an easement that allows Dairy Queen to use that area. So the proposal before the board this evening is to annex point seven three acres of one ninety-two to one ninety-six and annex point oh eight acres of one ninety-six to one ninety-two. So there's a strip right here of one ninety-two, and, you know, it's a little bit hard to see, but the bold line would be the new property line here. So there's a strip right in here of one ninety-six that would be annexed to one ninety-two. And then this whole back portion here that encompasses the, the parking lot with the Dairy Queen at one ninety-six, that would be, that's actually part of one ninety-two that would be annexed to one ninety-six. So another component of this also is that the city has requested that we provide a seven foot wide right of way easement along the entire frontage. And so what that results in is one ninety-two has a new area of two point three six acres and a new frontage of a hundred and ninety, excuse me, a hundred eighty-nine point five five feet. And one ninety-six has a new area of one point five six acres with a new frontage of a hundred eighty-three point four zero feet.
That's next.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, that's pretty straightforward, I think, all the way around. Any questions from the board? Any member of the audience have any questions regarding this application? No? All right, so we will close the public hearing. Is that what you were saying, whispering to me? Just barely heard it. All right.
Thank you.
We'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much for your testimony. In our, in our packet, we've got some waiver applications. Twelve point oh five vicinity plan, twelve point oh seven, a wetlands delineation, twelve point oh eight three for topography. Three point one will do separately, so grant the waivers from the following sections of the subdivision regulations utilizing the criteria from RSA in its new packet. Specify circumstances relative to subdivision or conditions of the land as such subdivision indicate that the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations. Would someone like to make a motion to grant those waivers to, again, twelve point oh five, twelve point oh seven, and twelve point oh eight three?
So moved. Second.
That motion's made, been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And three point two is to grant major, excuse me, minor subdivision approval for the lot line adjustment at one ninety-two, one ninety-six Loudon Road, subject to the following conditions outlined in your packet, which is conditions one through seven. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that minor subdivision approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
That motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. That reads us, moves us up to eight D on our agenda. We're not going to move far off of Loudon Road, but if you can read that into the record?
Seven Multi-Site Solutions on behalf of Alan Johnson requests major site plan approval for the construction of a car wash at one ninety-two to one ninety-six Loudon Road in the general commercial district.
Okay, if we could get a staff update on this one?
Sure.
I jumped the gun and said that would the car wash had been moved around, so now I'll say the car wash has been moved around and moved around again and moved around back.
And moved back, yes. So we had some, some conversations about site layout, landscaping, architecturals. So this is, this is part of a, a previous site plan. This has always been perceived to be, or planned to be a future development expansion associated with Dairy Queen and then another third lot potentially in the future. So this site has been graded, drainage has already been installed as part of future plan development. So this is one of those pieces of future development. So we, we've worked with the applicant to clean up a number of things from the two thousand sixteen site plan, including some easements, some, some right of way. There's a sign that was partially within the right of way that's being moved back. And we did just receive revised plans from the applicant. So relative to the conversation about flipping the site around, you know, as, as you're all familiar, we, we try to have buildings fronting on the street for a better streetscape feel, better pedestrian experience, and that was what was originally conceived and, and hopefully designed by staff and applicants in two thousand sixteen. But it was supposed to be a restaurant back then. This is car wash, so we've been working with that. And we were not able to flip the building in a way to reflect those goals simply because of the drainage infrastructure that's already been installed. But we are happy with what the applicant has come forward with. Some more robust landscaping, a street wall for the pedestrian amenities is acceptable to staff. And the revised plans reflect those comments. And I believe ADR had, had a preference that a silo was included. As you've seen in your packets, the elevations, it's kind of a barn kind of aesthetic. So they liked the silo. And talks with the applicant, ADR wanted to see the silo closer to the road frontage, but because of a variety of reasons, visibility and things like that, that couldn't be done. But the gambrel roof has been brought forward so that, that more of a barn field is present on the streetscape.
Well, thank you, Sam, for that update. Welcome to the table. If you guys could state your names for the record?
Thank you. I'm Jim Waterman, Executive Vice President, Washville Car Wash.
And Brady Curly G with Seven Multi-Site Solutions.
Okay, tell us about this project.
So this project is going to be a state of the art express wash tunnel. If you're not familiar with it, it's basically a quick in and out for our customers. It's a really great experience as far as the ability to get in and out of the wash and satisfy your washing needs of your vehicle. We also provide a vacuum area as a convenience to our customers for free to give them the opportunity to clean the interior of the vehicle. We've got ten locations currently in the New England market. We're trying to expand into quite a few more. And we're really excited to present this project to the board for approval in the city Concord.
Great. So I get one question on the stacking of the cars. It looks to me that there's thirty cars in this, in this lot. Do you think, is it going to be that busy? Well, knock on wood. Yes, it's going to be that busy. They're going to be waiting to get in. It's a loaded question, but the, my question would be more, do you need that much space?
So, so here's what I would say. We have days where we hit capacity, okay? There's, there's great car wash today. Day today was a great example of a great car wash day. We want to make sure that there is enough maneuverability on the site. Our systems are very automated. We also have attendants at our tellers to keep traffic in an orderly fashion to keep them moving along. And the technology works really well as far as, you know, going from three lanes down into one and how quickly we can process the vehicles. We did show the amount of queuing and stacking only for demonstration purposes. In all the developments that we have done, it's kind of a, a little bit of a crap shoot as to what a board may want to, or may not want to see for queuing. So we try to put our best foot forward as, as, to have as much room as possible.
Okay, and then on the bypass, so again, looking at the plans, it looks like the bypass is on the inside lane, so anybody on the outside lane would have to cut over through the middle and, and get to that bypass lane to get out, right?
That's correct. There's also a provision with the technology in our gating system because we do have attendants that if for any reason somebody was stuck in an outer lane, we could easily manually lift the gate and let the, the customer exit.
Okay. Okay, questions from the board? And again, I think our concerns were, were having the cars on Loudon Road as opposed to, again, flipping it around, figuring out other ways to, to put it in. I can't see too, too much detail on the landscape plan, but it looks like it's fairly robust. The line of the street, what'd you call it, Sam? The wall that goes across there? So again, the cars coming in that are queued up, headlights are going to be mostly caught by that as far as the, as far as the height of the wall, but it's not going to be a six foot high wall, right?
Yeah, in one of our other locations, we have the same situation and we did the very similar.
Okay. How fast can you get through from the point one? So you're the, you're the spot number one, the door opens up. How fast do you get through to the end?
Typically less than a minute.
Oh, you really?
Yeah, it's a, it's a quick process, minute to a minute and a half.
It's only three bucks? That's great. Everybody know that?
Well, Richard, I was going to give it to you for free, so I mean, yeah.
Three bucks is a deal, right? Okay. And again, the, on our elevation drawings, it's a, I don't know, faux stone or is it even field stone is used for that fencing? So that looks nice. Again, questions from the board? Any questions or comments? This is a public hearing. Any member of the audience have any questions, concerns regarding this application? Nope. So we'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much for your testimony. Any other staff updates as far as anything regarding the report or the technical comments have all been outlined? There's several technical comments. Have those all been satisfied?
Yes, they have. And I will say that we have received updated plans.
Yeah.
So the landscaping is even more robust now.
More robust is good. Suzanne will be happy, so we'll approve that, or if it gets approved, it's, she'll be happy. Okay, so in our packets, we've got four point one to grant ADR approval for the building design landscaping and site layout with a recommendation that the barn entrance elevation be positioned to face Loudon Road, the silo be a darker color than the rest of the building and situated on the Loudon Road elevation if possible. Is that all accurate?
Yeah.
Okay, someone like to make a motion to grant ADR approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Four point two is to grant major site plan approval for the car wash and associated site improvements at one ninety-two Loudon Road in the general commercial district, G C district, subject to the following precedent conditions outlined in your packet, which are precedent conditions one, A, one, two, and three, B, one, two, and three. Would someone like to make a motion to grant major site plan approval as outlined?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Good luck with that project. And that moves us on to item eight E in our agenda. If we could read that into the record?
Novus Group on behalf of HLF East LLC requests a major site plan approval for the construction of a new twenty-two thousand eight hundred square foot structure and one thousand two hundred, two hundred and fifty square foot structure for the purpose of a car dealership and associated site improvements, and a conditional use permit for the addition of impervious surface area within the aquifer protection district at one thirty-four Manchester Street in the highway car rental district.
Okay, could we get a staff update on this project?
Sure. So this was determined complete a couple of months ago. It was postponed last might, last month pending some findings of the traffic study and ongoing discussions that staff had with the applicant regarding the driveway location. Most recently, we did receive updated plans on Monday, I think, and based on discussions with our consultant engineer, traffic engineer, Jeff Santa Cruz popped in for a little bit for part of the discussion, even though he's not here tonight. And their traffic engineer, I think we've come up with a solution that's agreeable to all parties and we appreciate them working with us. We think it's a good solution to address the concerns with traffic current conditions and future conditions on Manchester Street. So that's one of the issues. And then the other one is regarding impervious surface area. Staff has recommended additional, reducing some of the pavement. They're at pretty much the maximum amount of impervious surface area. It is within the aquifer protection district. So staff had requested a reduction and it's, since this is a development of regional impact, it impacts the Pembroke water supply. They had also, their planning board also made a recommendation to reduce some of the impervious surface area. So those are things that I believe the applicant will talk to tonight.
Okay, welcome to the table. If you guys could state your names for the record?
Thank you. Chris Netto with Novus Group.
Hi, Amanda Osmar with Graponi Automotive. I'm not planning on crying. This is for my cold.
Thank you for the mask. Thank you. All right, Chris?
Yeah, so this is the, the plan that you should have in your, in your packets. It's one thirty-four Manchester Street. It's again a one point seven acre lot. For those of you who have been around as long as I have, this used to be the Volkswagen dealership.
Long time ago.
Yeah, a long time ago, until Graponi purchased the site around two thousand and five, and they've been using it as their wholesale and auction location for the past fifteen, sixteen years. So they are proposing to move the Mazda dealership up from the Ford location in Bow Junction up to this site with brand new building of around twenty-six thousand square feet and actually a small car wash out back of about twelve hundred and fifty feet. That will be just for Graponi's use. That will not be a public car wash. Everybody can go over to- over to Loudoun Road for that.
Get through in a minute, you hear that? For three bucks?
So as part of the site plan approval, Gripeni's actually giving up about, I think it's twelve feet of frontage along Manchester Street, works out to be right around six-thousand square feet, and that's for the Manchester Street widening project that likely will happen sometime in this decade, hopefully.
Yeah.
So they are actually losing about six-thousand square feet of frontage and area on the lot. So Beth mentioned about the sort of changed condition here, originally we had the driveway located centered on the lot, trying to get it away from, as far away from either neighbor as possible, and then we discovered that maybe that wasn't such a great thing. Our traffic engineer had actually recommended to get pushed further away from Banks driveway, so under the new layout, we've pushed the driveway to the west, so it's about a hundred-and-seventy-five feet from Banks driveway. What that allows is people approaching the Gripeni driveway from Pembroke can turn, take a left into the site without, without crashing into people going left into Banks coming from downtown. As part of the improvements, we're also proposing a twelve-foot bypass lane along Banks frontage, and what that does is if somebody's turning left into the Gripeni site coming from Pembroke, then a car can go around them, and they don't hold up traffic. So with the new layout, we're proposing ninety parking spaces, which is required by code, one hundred and forty-eight display spaces for inventory. Currently, the site stormwater just runs off, there's really no control, it all runs off into the city system, and then discharges untreated to, to the system downstream. So under the new site plan, we're proposing to infiltrate a hundred percent of the stormwater that comes on to the site for up to a hundred-year storm, it's actually ninety-five percent of a hundred-year storm, a hundred percent of a fifty-year storm, so we'll infiltrate that back into the groundwater, so it's a much better condition than it's currently there today. We are in the aquifer protection district, which you can see that line runs right along here, the majority of the site is in the aquifer protection district, and that's protecting Pembroke's wells down on the river, or next to the river. So we are required to get a conditional use permit for use in the aquifer protection district. We are asking for, to go right to the eighty percent lot coverage, you know, the goal here is to provide inventory storage for, for the dealership, I think you'll find all up and down Manchester Street with the other dealerships, that they maximize their lot areas regardless of whether they're paved or not. So we've tried to maximize the ability to store vehicles on the site, so I do know that staff has recommended a condition of the, of the C U P that we reduce some of our lot coverage, but we're asking that the board consider the use as a car dealership, and the fact that we're vastly improving the stormwater controls on the site and allow us to have the eighty percent lot coverage. That's really it, it's on public water and sewer, you know, we've submitted a landscape and lighting plan, and we're just working with staff to tweak the final parts of the plan, and hopefully get under construction by the end of the year, so.
Okay, so landscape plan and lighting plans have been submitted?
Yes.
Sign package?
Not yet.
Okay, can't put the cart before the horse, I guess, right?
And I didn't show you the billing, if you have it in your, I'm sure you're having your package, but this is what the billing will look like from Manchester Street.
And streets, street signs as well?
Plans for a freestanding sign, yes.
So landscaping coverage, five percent is the, am I right? Five percent's the number you're providing, five-point-six, where is that, where's that going to go?
It's in the islands, in the, in the middle of the parking lot, so you see up front here?
Yeah.
There's a long landscape island, then along the east side, there's also, and then there are some interior bumpouts here along the edge parking.
So on the left side of the plan, any landscaping on the left side of the plan in the back, along the edge, what's there now?
Along the edge, it's forested, actually, on the back part of the property, there's some trees there, that backs right up to, to what used to be heritage, and all, all of heritage's property is cleared and paved out back, but yeah, we're clearing the rest of the trees on the lot, with the exception of a corner there.
Okay.
I forgot to mention one other, one other benefit of the site, they're proposing to put charging stations along the east, I'm sorry, on the western side, and there's these parking spaces along here for charging electric vehicles.
That's great, well needed. Mazda vehicles or all vehicles?
They'll be universal chargers, unless you're Tesla. It'll have to be different.
Oh, I just had a question, any comments or concerns from Jeff Santa Cruz? Again, just for the record, Jeff Santa Cruz is a sitting member of the planning board, is not able to be here tonight, but he's a traffic, traffic guy, so he's our traffic guy, any questions or comments from him?
Nope, he reviewed, Chris sent us the plans with the turning movements, and Jeff was pleased to see, he thought that was a great improvement over what was previously presented, so he didn't have any other concerns.
And tell me again, you're going to put a, you're going to put a lane on the other side of the street?
Yeah, it's a bypass shoulder, twelve feet of pavement, basically, to allow somebody to get by a car if it was turning left.
Okay, and that's in the city right away, right?
Yep.
So that's paved, that's plowed?
Yes.
And it goes to their entrance?
It, it goes from Banks driveway up about three hundred feet, it tapers off.
And it tapers back in?
Towards the, towards downtown, to the, to the west.
So headed towards downtown?
Yep.
So if you're coming from Pembroke, you're able to go around?
Right.
And nobody turns into Banks anyways, so.
No, no.
Full of it tonight, huh? It's been a long night.
Boy, not a long night yet, but...
All right, questions or concerns?
Right?
Yeah, they're not here tonight, so. Questions, concerns, comments from the board?
No, I'll just make one comment, and that is, thank you for bringing your project to Concord, we appreciate it, and thank you for working with our staff to iron out these, these issues.
I said at the Conservation Commission when we were here for the, the landscape planning was that next year's ninety-nine years, it will potentially be to the day that my great-grandparents opened their gas station in Concord, so it's kind of cool.
No kidding?
November nineteenth, that's what we're shooting.
On Fisher One State Street?
South Main Street, was it State Street or Main?
It's across from our belt, well, it's now right...
Yeah, right up on the old Pontiac dealership yesterday.
Exactly, that's, yeah, that was the original site, yep.
Yeah.
Oh, my first car there.
Thank you for your business.
It was a Pontiac, it was really bad used car experiences, it was my fault.
Operator error.
Certainly, go right ahead.
My uncle.
It was.
Do you want to open the public hearing, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, yeah. Why, yeah.
I just have a quick question, I haven't been able to start to study the new plan, I know you requested waivers for driveway widths, but it almost looks like some of the driveways that kind of, by shifting it, it almost took care of that, do you think you still need those waivers?
The transport trucks, right?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember, the waiver was...
Was it forty foot?
Yeah, we're proposing a forty-foot aisle.
Okay.
And I think the purpose of that, Beth, is just because the transport trucks have such wide turning radiuses?
Yep. Okay, just wanted to make sure, because it, but some of them did narrow up greatly, so, and I appreciate the island that you added on the east side, that's a new addition as well, so thank you for adding that. I think that was it.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify those two things.
Okay, any comments or questions from the audience regarding this application? Boy, I don't know what everybody's here for. All right, so we will close the public hearing, thank you very much for your testimony, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other follow-up from staff regarding the report or the package here as far as, oof, my goodness, long.
So I guess something to think about, oh, so I guess, Chris, sorry, the follow-up question, is there, is it still eighty percent impervious?
It is, yep.
It's still, okay. One of the concerns we had was there was more expanse of pavement before without landscaping, but now that they've added that island, you know, there's sort of that balance that they added in, that gives it that break, is what we were looking for, so I leave it to you if you want to remove that condition, or if you feel comfortable with this revision. As they stated, they are, one of the goals of the aquifer protection district is to treat the stormwater, so they are treating the stormwater on-site regardless of the impervious surface area. So I guess that's one thing that I'd like you to take into consideration.
Where's the condition, where is it in there?
So under five-point-two, under the granting, the waivers for parking lot aisles, it's said to give the waiver for the, allowing the wider parking lot widths, with the condition that the applicant reduce drive aisles, which they've done pretty much by rearranging the site.
Okay, so we remove that, section eighteen oh seven, which is the first under five-point-two, are you saying to remove that?
Nope, just remove the condition of that.
Remove the condition of that.
Yeah, and then also under five-point-three...
What about driveway width, so eighteen-point-ten driveway widths to allow thirty-five-foot driveway radius where a maximum of twenty-five is allowed, so we're going forty, right?
That's, no, forty was for the aisle, right, and then the driveway radius was thirty-five for the transport truck, so they need the width and the, and the radius. And then under five-point-three, the second C U P with the condition for the aquifer protection district to reduce the amount of impervious surface, and it's pretty much a repeat of that condition that was above, which they've sort of addressed by adding the islands within the parked areas.
And the, and filtering the water?
Yeah.
Treating the water.
Right.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
So again, in our packet, we've got five-point-one to grant architectural design review approval as we close the public hearing, I already did that.
You did.
You have to remind me.
I know.
So five-point-one is to grant architectural design review approval for the site plan and building elevations with the condition that the applicant provide additional trees within the interior portion of the parking lot, or?
Are you planting trees in that new island on the east?
Yes, we will.
So we're going to remove that, is that, or no?
Yeah. We haven't, we haven't seen the revised landscape plan, so I believe that, I don't think they'll have an issue addressing that, it sounds like they already are, if you want to leave it in there, just for administrative...
Says with the condition that they'll add additional, so I don't want to tell them they have to add additional, so, or review with staff regarding the plantings on the interior islands, okay.
Yes, yeah.
So would someone like to make a motion to grant architectural designer review approval with that condition, that they review the landscaping with staff?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, that moves us to five-point-two, and Beth, keep me honest here on this, so grant the following waivers to the site plan regulations per RSA six seventy-four forty-four, and that's outlined in your packet under, so item one, which is in there, which is section eighteen oh seven, eighteen oh eight, and nineteen oh five.
Eighteen ten.
Eighteen ten and nineteen oh five. Would someone like to make a motion to grant the waivers to the site plan regulations as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, five-point-three is to grant the following conditional use permits, the C U P in accordance with section twenty-eight seven seven F, the zoning ordinance to allow for the construction of a forty-foot driveway entrance where twenty-eight foot is the maximum width, and C U P in accordance with, and is this, is this, is this in there correctly?
It's, yep, for certain uses within the AP district, just removal of the condition.
Removal of the condition, so would someone like to make a motion to grant the following conditional use permits as outlined?
So moved.
Motion has been made.
Second.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, five-point-four is to grant major site plan approval for the construction of a twenty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty square foot Mazda dealership with the service bay, a twenty-two hundred and fifty square foot service, self-service Car Wash facility, associated parking and vehicle display area is subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions outlined in precedent conditions, A, one through, oh, A, one through six, and B, one through five, would someone like to make a motion to grant major site plan approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, you're all set?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to the neighborhood?
Thank you, thanks for your help, Beth.
Thank you very much, and again, thank you for working with staff on getting through all those little issues. Okay, that moves us rapidly on to item...
Eight F.
Eight F in our agenda, which is Abbott Road LLC, if we could read that into the record?
Abbott Road LLC, on behalf of Victor Engel, requests major subdivision approval for a sixteen-lot subdivision for single-family residences, and a conditional use permit for the approval for the disturbance of wetland buffer at one forty-five Abbott Road in the medium-density residential district.
Okay, so we have no determination completeness component was done last month, much to the chagrin of many people in the audience, so we will open the public hearing, we'll get a staff update, and we'll go from there.
Very good. So as stated, this is a sixteen-lot subdivision with a conditional use permit portion, so there has been quite a bit of back and forth, actually, really good, I want to commend the applicant for working with staff well before submission was actually made, so we made some really good progress on this project before it ever started the process formally. A couple of points to that, to note, so this, this lot is basically a large triangle, and on the northern end, there's an existing sewer line that basically comes across the lot, bringing sewer service from Sewell's Falls Road to the Alder Creek Development across the street, and the applicant will be extending that sewer line southerly down Abbott Road to service that side of the development. So we wanted to take advantage of that existing sewer, because the applicant is going to be building sidewalk on the Sewell's Falls side to serve this development, there is an existing sidewalk on Abbott Road across the street from the development, we are, we had worked with the applicant to develop a trail that would connect over this sewer line in an existing easement that is being amended, to connect the new Sewell's Falls sidewalk to the sidewalk that's currently existing on Abbott Road, and the applicant has, has worked with us to make that a reality. In addition, because this is, so many lots on this, new lots on this parcel, we were concerned about curb cuts, we're always looking at access management, so the applicant had agreed to do shared driveways wherever possible, which is tremendous in terms of access management. So with a new sidewalk, a trail connection, shared driveways, this is, this is a good example of good infill development on a, on a green site in an already well-developed area. Relative to the conditional use permit, there is two sections of wetlands, one of which the trail will, will impact the buffer actually in both instances, so that's why we have the conditional use permit for that wetland buffer impact, the conservation commission is supportive as, as a staff. I know we have a couple of engineering comments that we'll bring engineering up to address shortly, but those are the, the key comments I wanted you to bring up in these staff updates.
Great, thanks, Sam. Welcome to the table, if you guys could state your name for the record?
Jeff Byrd, R J B Engineering.
Robert Pace, at the applicant.
The applicant, well, welcome to the table, let's tell, just tell us about this project.
Like, like Sam said, it's eight-point-four acres, we're subdividing it into sixteen building lots, the minimum lot size is about a quarter acre, and they go up to an acre and a half, the lot in the northwest, northeast corner with the well in on it is about an acre and a half in size. So Sam covered most of the stuff, the sewer extension, the sidewalk, we're, we're building the trail from Abbott Road to Sewell's Falls Road in lieu of building the sidewalk on Abbott Road, and we think that's, that'll be an asset to the city, you know, it'll provide access to Sewell's Falls Park further down Sewell's Falls Road, and, you know, it's a nice addition to the community. As Sam said, we are having shared access points, we wouldn't call them shared drives, they're, they're more or less combining the drives at the entrance to limit the number of curb cuts on, on the streets, so, you know, other than that, I think Sam covered pretty much all of it, there were, I know in your packet, a number of engineering comments which have been addressed, these plans, these latest plans do address ninety-nine percent of those, I know there's some lingering issues with, with engineering, but we're in the process of working that out, and, other than that, I don't know if Bob, you want to add anything?
No, I think, no, I think you've covered, if there's any questions, okay, of course, I'll answer it. Did we talk about the land in the front?
The...
Okay, for the intersection.
Right away?
Yeah.
And the right away, the right away dedication, yeah.
So I just want to expand on that slightly. So, I just want to expand on that slightly. So, as part of this, these discussions, the applicant has granted some additional right of way to us at the very point of this lot where Abbott and Sewell's come together. Right now, the intersection is really a pant leg intersection. In the future, because the applicant is granting us some additional right of way, we have a capital improvement project to tee up the intersection a little bit more, to make it a little bit safer. And Jeff, if you wouldn't mind to, if you scroll down just a little bit on this, I believe it's on this one, to show the, where the trail will dump out onto the sidewalk and making that sidewalk connection with the crosswalk at Abbott Road. There's something I just, oh, that'll do that sheet right here.
Okay.
So, this is both for the applicant and the board. This section of sidewalk right here, this is currently proposed on a private lot, so we'll probably need to do an easement with you guys, just so, because that will be publicly used, and it is proposed on private land right now, because I noticed there's a utility pole right there, so I understand why it's located where it is, so we'll just make that a condition of approval, and we'll work through that with you guys.
Is that the only section of sidewalk in that space?
On public property, yes. We could probably just amend the trail easement to include that.
Right.
Yes. Who's responsible for plowing it?
Good question.
Fair question.
If we, yeah, we'll.
Okay, I mean, I know that's been, that's been the bane of a lot of these big projects, is don't put, don't put small little pieces of sidewalk in that need to be publicly maintained, so I'd want to be concerned about that.
It's more associated with the trail.
Yeah, no, I get it, and I get why they're doing it. Teeing it out, making the trail come right to the edge is not an option.
So, we didn't want what would be a mid-block crossing, we would like to see the crosswalk at that intersection with Alder Creek, so you have two crosswalks coming together rather than further down, where if vehicles, you know, cruising down Abbott Road, they see an intersection, that's where you would associate a crosswalk with, rather than before.
Mid-block, I get that. So, if you look at the, if you look at the trail, though, is the trail, where that trail bumps in and starts to head down towards Abbott Road, why wouldn't you just go right along the straight line, keep it straight, and go right to the, right to the intersection? You see what I'm saying? I'm saying just go straight, yeah, go right to that, just like that.
I believe the idea would be to preserve as much lot for the property owner.
Oh, you're gonna, oh, no, I'm sorry, you're going across a driveway, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. My fault. My fault. Okay, questions from the board? Byron.
Thank you. Just a quick question, on this plan, it indicates that the existing house is going to be raised, and then the wording that's used is the barn to be removed, is the barn being repurposed someplace?
Yes, that's, that's the intention.
Excellent.
Okay, that, just a little bit history, I guess that was recently, when I say recently, okay, the barn is a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five years old.
Yeah, and we're really losing our historic barns, which really are an important part of the landscape, not just of this city, but of the state, so thank you for taking care of that, thank you for looking into that. Appreciate it.
And it is going to be reused in some capacity?
Oh, you're asking on this project?
No, 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 but some places it's going to be reused.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions, Carol?
So, I just want to make sure I understand the sidewalk situation. So, there is a sidewalk on the, I don't know where north is on this map, but on the opposite side of Abbott Road from the development.
Yeah, Sewell's Falls is a sidewalk.
So, my question is, children who are going to walk to Beaver Meadows School from the Abbott Road part of this development would need to cross the road, cross the street to get onto the sidewalk?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, that seems like a sort of dicey situation, knowing the level of traffic on Abbott Road.
Well, the crossing would have to occur at some point, because this side of the development on Abbott Road would terminate in an intersection. It does not connect to, you would have to cross the street at some point, so that's why it's being combined with the crossing with the trail, and that crossing also connects to a sidewalk on Alder Creek.
Right, but, I mean, kids coming from these two, six houses are gonna have to either walk down the road with no sidewalk to get to a sidewalk, or scoot across the road, sort of willy-nilly, it seems to me.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, I think we got some people here that want to talk, so I'll send you guys back. We'll probably, if you can just take some notes on your, on questions that are asked, we're gonna ask you some questions on the way back. So, we'll queue up people and take them one at a time, if we'd like to come up and...
I'm sorry, what?
No, I gotta steal the pen then.
Yeah, that's fine, we got another, I got another pen, whoops, if you want to put a pen over there. Who's first? Who would like to come in? Public hearing's open, come on up, or let me point to somebody if you'd like to come up. Hands, yeah.
I keep scratching on the plans.
Oh, it does. That's not you.
Come on, do you come up to the table?
Yes, please, sir.
Okay, great.
Yeah, sorry.
And please sign in when you come up to visit.
I have a letter I'd like to read, sorry, I didn't get it too soon.
Sure, if you could just state your names for the record?
Sure, my name is Jean Doobie, I live at thirty-seven Metalac Drive.
And where is that in relation to this project?
Our property would be abutting.
So, Metalac Drive abuts this property to the north, we own about, I believe it's fourteen acres, and it's thirty-six condo units.
Okay, yep, I know where it is, okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Dear members of the planning board, we are writing to express our opposition to this large subdivision on Abbott Road as proposed. Jacora Village Condominium Association is a small association comprised of thirty-six owners located on Metalac Drive, a private road. Our property borders both Abbott Road and Sewell's Falls Road, and would be drastically impacted by this project. We share the concern of some of our neighbors on Abbott and Sewell's Falls Roads. The concept visuals for the project indicate that this subdivision would greatly affect the current rural feel of the area due to a significant increase in traffic, and a possible need to widen these roads as a result, which appears to be demonstrated on the proposal. We are alarmed along with our neighbors for the disruption to the wetlands on and abutting this lot, and the effect that a large sixteen-building subdivision would have on the ecosystem, including the bears, deer, foxes, ducks, turkeys, and other wildlife in the area. These animals have been inhabiting this wetland area for a very long time, and as we are sure our neighbors would all agree, are an important part of this neighborhood. However, we have other areas of concern that are unique to Jacora Village Condominium Association. We have had to contend with the fact that our condominiums were built on wetland, and that improper fill was used at that time. Because of this, much as our shared yard area retains water all year round, we have spent a great deal of money over the years on some pumps and other measures in an effort to keep water out of our basements. We have also spent a substantial amount of money to repeatedly repave driveways and fix sinkholes in our road due to the poor drainage of the property. We are understandably concerned that wetland disrupted by this extensive amount of construction might end up diverted onto our property, and result in additional serious water drainage issues that we would have to further struggle to contend with financially. As a small condominium association on a private road, we are also concerned about another potential economic impact this large subdivision would have on our residents. As Metalac Drive is not a dead-end road, there already are a number of non-residents who use our road as a throughway despite signs indicating that it is a private road. Neither these non-residents nor the City of Concord contribute to the upkeep of the road, which includes plowing, paving, and sinkhole filling. The additional wear and tear on our road by even more non-residents who would take a shortcut on Metalac Drive, both during and after the construction of this subdivision, would contribute to even more hardship for our owners. As a private association, we also pay for our dumpsters when they need to be replaced, and pay to have our trash dumpster emptied. There are residents of neighboring subdivisions who place items in our dumpsters in order to avoid taking them to the transfer station and paying a disposal fee. The addition of more neighborhood residents, some of whom would surely end up contributing to this practice, would also increase the burden on our owners, as we would need to have the dumpsters emptied and replaced more often. We would like to thank you in advance for keeping all of the above in mind when considering the impact that this subdivision would have on our condominium association, as well as on the other homeowners whose land borders this section of Abbott and Sewell's Falls Roads.
Great, thank you for your testimony, questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I did want to just mention one thing about this proposed trail, so there is actually a sidewalk that goes through neighborhoods very shortly up the road, so I guess I'm not quite sure why it might be needed there, but that's not my decision to make. But where there is one that cuts through Flume, which then goes through Willard, and then past Metalac Drive, and then on to Abbott Road, I mean, essentially that cut through is already there. So, that's certainly something to consider, too, but, and we're also concerned about just usage of our land. You know, where we have fourteen acres, we are a condo association, we certainly do our best to keep in mind of the borders and whatnot, but, you know, we're having a trail kind of right on that border there. You know, we are certainly concerned with folks that may decide to recreate in the woods that is our land, and being, again, a small condo association, to have the surveys, to hire the lawyers and whatnot, it's a challenge. So, we just wanted to be sure that this wasn't going to directly impede on, you know, the land that we have, and that we've worked hard to maintain.
Would a fence help?
People can go around a fence, but...
If it's all the way, I mean, if it's the whole way, all the way to the end.
Something to consider.
Okay. Thank you very much, any questions? Thanks for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who's next?
I'll go.
All right, come on up.
I'm Danielle Hillstro, I live at one-one-four Sewell's Falls Road. This chair is really low. I have, I have lots of concerns here, so, one of which is drainage. Right now, currently, half of my driveway is a lake as it is, because of poor drainage over there. I don't see on the plans where drainage is really going to go, and with more driveways and more impervious surface, that's going to be more of an issue. Another thing is, I did read the thirteen page, I'm assuming that was your input to the original plans that they had to fix or something from the last one, because I was invited to the last meeting, only to be told that it wasn't a public hearing for that one. But it's, it would be, those things have to be done, and it looked like the certificate of occupancy would not be given until they were, but I want to make sure that those are, definitely would have to be part of it. The shared driveways, I mean, yeah, one of them is going to be glaring right in my big picture window, and with no screen, with no kind of, they're, I mean, they're obviously going to be taking my screen away, what few trees are still there on the other side of the road. The traffic inputs, we have a lot of traffic on Sewell's Falls Road, you know, in, year round, year round, for all the visitors that come to this state, traffic starts to back up at exit seventeen, and they have learned to either get off exit eighteen and take route one thirty-two through the town, or take one thirty-two to Sewell's Falls, and then take route three to miss the traffic through Concord. Same thing goes for, I mean, we're talking ski season, we're talking snowmobile season, we're talking the people who go boating up in the Lakes Region and camping up north. We camp up north, and we get off exit seventeen. So, there is a lot of traffic that goes through that area. I am with, was it Ms. Foss, about the sidewalk issue. My kids have not had a sidewalk on Sewell's Falls Road, I'm not complaining about that at all, just to say. But it is dangerous to cross the street. We live on an intersection, and there is no crosswalk there. That property used to be the overflow for the golf course, when the golf course had big events, and now what they, what the golfers do is park on, right in front of our properties. Never mind the fact that they parked the wrong way going down Beaver Meadows Drive, but, I mean, just last year, we had an incident where we have a massive pine tree on the corner of our property, and there was a vehicle that was parked there that's illegal because it was too close to our driveway, never mind blocking the corner. It's, it's, so overflow from events at the golf course is already an issue, and now you're going to put a sidewalk on the other side of the street where they could be going, and not narrowing the street anymore? I mean, I just worry about it looking just like Beaver Meadows Drive does on big events, where it literally is one lane of traffic, which cannot be safe, especially if there was some kind of emergency. But, I mean, it's just, the traffic is going to be an issue, the drainage is going to be an issue. Why sixteen? Why do we need to even take that wooded area down? Okay? You could easily just put like four houses on a half acre each in the area that's already cleared, period. All right? I mean, to be honest, I think we take the house down, we leave the barn there, and we put a little tree farm in, I don't know, but it's, there's, there's a lot of issues that go into this. The other thing would be the timing of building, are they going to build these one at a time as they were, as they are sold? And so, we're going to have the constant disruption to the roads and everything else that's going to be going on? Or is it all going to be built at one time? But again, sixteen, that is just so many. I mean, that's a minimum of thirty-two cars. You figure two per house, I mean...
That's not, I mean, I appreciate it, but...
It's just a lot.
That's not our, let me speak, excuse me, hey, excuse me, my meeting, I want to speak, I'll let you speak in just a sec. Our purview here isn't to minimize the ability for the private property owner to build, to build units on their house. If they determine it six, or twelve, or sixteen, we're not here to change that. We're here to make sure it's in accordance with the city law. This isn't a public project, this isn't something that needs to be approved in the public space, this is private property, the person can do with it what they want. We're not here to tell them that they can only build four houses, or six houses, or put a tree farm in. So, continue on, but that's, that's not in our purview, that's not something we're going to be able to help you with.
Well, it's still a traffic issue, it's going to be a traffic issue. What is going to be the impact on the current sewage system, on the current water system? What is the, they're taking away that little turn at the end, at the point?
No, they're not taking away the turn at the point. They're going to propose to put a T in at the point, but it's not going to be on until it's, until it's, until it's done.
So, but yeah, so, I mean, there's, there's just a lot there. There's a note on page five that says, proposed building shown for graphical representation only, the actual size, location, and orientation may vary. It appears that many of the structures on other pages are extremely close to setback boundaries, especially the house that's right on the corner, right on the point, and there doesn't appear to be much wiggle room for a change of location or size and orientation. Again, the issue with the path right in the wetlands, I mean, some of the sizes, we're looking at point two-nine, point two-nine, point three-three, point three-six, and point four-one, right across, at least up Sewell's Falls. I mean, that's, and it's the very minimum, you say right in the, the write-up, I guess, the description of the project, that we are a minimum density, and there's a lot of neighbors that would not like to move to high density. You know, if we wanted to live in West Village, we would have bought a house in West Village, but we chose to live on Sewell's Falls Road, because it's a little more spread out, and it looks much nicer, and you're not on top of each other. And some neighbors of mine, we've lived there for thirty years, they say, Sewell's Falls Road has always been a traffic cutoff through Mountain Road and North State Street and Fisherville Road. When Sewell's Falls Bridge was replaced, the traffic increased exponentially, the speed limit is thirty, and that is rarely observed. Cars flies down, fly down our road at fifty to sixty miles per hour daily, the morning commute traffic is heavy, and difficult now to get out of your driveway safely. Weekends see even more traffic speeding. With sixteen new homes, it's likely that they... With 16 new homes, it's likely that they will have school-aged children that will need to walk to the bus stops. And again, I mean, you mentioned the danger on Abbott Road, and it's already a danger And then another comment that I received from another neighbor, the ankle property is eight plus or minus acres, part of which is wetlands with restrictions on how close the structure can be built to it. Is the City Conservation Board aware of the proposed plan, putting 16 homes on that-sized lot? And land is a stretch to say the least. 25 years ago, around '95, '96, they fought to have the sewer line extended down Sewell's Falls Road and Beaver Meadow Drive. It had been approved by the city in 1991, but never done. 16 additional residences will have a significant impact on the current systems. Have soil tests been done on the delineation of the wetland area by DES? Where does conservation stand on the potential impact of wildlife? I mean, it's just not, it's not going to improve our neighborhood. It's going to add more issues than it's going to help. We love the animals that frolic across the street. It's great to see them. Where would they go then? Maybe to the golf course, I guess, and tear that up? But, you know, there's all kinds of things that are not being taken into effect here that this massive project would impact.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Comments? Thank you very much for your testimony. If you could just sign in on the record there? Okay, who's next? Yep, come on up. You can take that out of the chair.
Mr.?
Yep.
Ben Allen, Butter at 128 Sewell's Falls Road. And as much as I don't want to be looking at somebody else's front yard, you know, I understand that it's private property, somebody has a right to make some money on it, and there's a need for housing. But the parent in me that's worried about the traffic, and all those things they've mentioned, is on weekend return traffic, you've got, from whatever navigation service, cars with mask plates lined up all the way down from Manor Road and back down to the corner, you're going to be barricading those driveways in because it's bumper-to-bumper. The speeds have gone up since the bridge was widened, needed to happen. But our previous neighbors at 124 bought the house, moved in with two little kids while the bridge was out, and had to move once it opened up, because they just couldn't risk it with the two little kids. So, that's my fear, is that you're going to have all these yards, you're going to have, you know, front yards, backyards, whatever's going on there, and that much more traffic. And then, you know, as much as it's increased now, we've got the market basket that's going to eventually open up, upon interchange up there, and that's going to be even more. I mean, if you look at it, yes, if you, from like the hood plant north, it's going to be a better place for a lot of people to go rather than Fort Eddy. So you're going to have that additional traffic to, up to that market basket and restaurant and all that stuff. And yeah, if you look at the map, it's technically shorter to go through Petticoat, but if you look at Google Maps or whatever, they'll tell you it's faster to go up Sewell's Falls and Mountain Road. And just the speed that it goes through there, I'd be worried about, frankly, kids, pets getting hit. People don't slow down. I don't know what we can do about that, and if you're adding that many driveways, there's just going to be that many more opportunities for problems. You know, I know it's not the board's place to say how to do what they want to do with their land, but I don't know if they'd have put any thought into turning it, the outside in, maybe reducing the number of lots and putting in a, you know, like a street opposite Alder Creek and a cul-de-sac or something, so they could keep all of that off of the side streets, minimize all the interactions there. But that's really what scares me, is that you're going to have all these, more driveways, more kids on a road where people go too fast. And it's only going to get worse, because once, you know, those places are open, I'm happy to have a supermarket up there on exit 17. We'll go there, but you realize that there's going to be more traffic going that way, because it is the fastest route.
But again, private property, would you rather have a market basket in this spot?
Well, it's...
Again, I'm asking, you know...
I understand, but I mean, it's currently zoned, it's the RS, right? So it's the single-family home stuff.
Yeah.
And are they changing it?
Nope, nope, nope.
Because a bunch of things in the plan talk about medium density.
Yeah.
So is it changing to medium density?
Doesn't change, there's no changes to any of those...
Because there's a bunch of references in it that are stating RM, but the city's GIS says it's RS.
Yeah, I don't know for that.
And I know the plans have changed, but I pulled down the more recent ones, and they refer to medium density, but it's really, it's not. So, that was just a question. I didn't know if that was getting rezoned or something.
No, there's no zoning changes at all.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, I'll sign in.
Thank you very much. Who's next? Last chance? Nope? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Thank you everyone for your testimony. And again, I want to be clear, the project itself is not asking for a lot of consideration on things that are wrong with it. So typically, somebody needs a lot of waivers, they need a lot of conditional use permits, they need a lot of things to put a project in place. This one doesn't, because it's, come on back up, yeah, because it's falling into a category where it doesn't need a lot of space.
Do you want to take back your closing of the public hearing?
Oh, yeah, I don't want to close the public hearing, sorry. Sorry. Leave the public hearing...
Lisa, you're so trained.
Lisa, it's your fault. We'll leave the public hearing open. Welcome the applicant, welcome the applicant back to the table. So you heard some testimony regarding, mostly around water diversion, so I want to talk a little bit about surface preparation. You heard a little bit about sidewalks, you heard a little fence conversation, drainage was an issue, and then certainly, you can't do anything with the traffic, and I realize that, and recognize the fact that there's no traffic issues that you can address, other than the 16 spots that you're doing. We'll recognize David Seaterholm from the city staff, city engineering department's dropping into the table here, so please go ahead, and if you want to maybe respond to any of those questions or comments, that would be great.
So basically, the traffic, the drainage, I, and, well, let's talk about some of the easy ones. Okay, you're right, we didn't ask for a lot of waivers here, okay? We're meeting your requirements, okay? And that's what, that was the easier part of this. You know, okay, I guess we could have asked for a zoning change, built condominium, and there'd be even more...
Put a market basket there.
Although profitable, I don't know that that would go there.
Put a little mini mart at the corner.
The, okay, the sewer line, we're extending the sewer line. We view that as a benefit to the city rather than a detriment. I'm sure the staff will probably agree with that. Okay, the trees, we're planting trees. We're not just planting trees, we're, okay, I'm not sure what the words, but salt-friendly trees, okay? That was a request by the ConCon. Okay, I touched bases on setbacks. So, I'm going to let Jeff address the drainage, because, well, we'll go get a drainage, have rain gardens, okay, in between the driveways. And what we tried to do is contain all of the water, okay, to go back into the aquifer, okay, on the lot. So, I believe we proved that out. All I said, I was going to let you talk, but, okay, apparently not. And...
So just for clarity, draining back into the aquifer is basically, if the rain's falling in on the property now without any impervious surface on it, it's not going anywhere other than where it's going in. So if there's swales built, if there's retention built underground, or however you're going to do it, the rain that drops on that property is going to stay on that property.
And that's what we're looking at. We're proposing drip-line trenches, so underneath every eave of the houses, there'd be a stone trench for the water to infiltrate into the ground. And for the driveways, we're proposing dry wells, so that anything that comes off the driveway would go into this dry well and infiltrate into the soil. So we're not really, and it's a good sandy soil, it's a hydraulic Group A, which is a free-draining, excessively-drained soil. So, we don't see any problem with this, you know, as far as, and it's very flat, too. So, I'm not sure what drainage problems she's having with her property, but I don't know of any drainage problems on the subject property.
So is the property, as I look at it, if I'm sitting at the very top of the corner of Sewell's Falls Abbott Road, and I'm moving my way down, aren't I going downhill? Or am I still flat all the way through your property?
You're actually, on Sewell's Falls Road, you're going up very slightly, and then back downhill after you reach the peak, which is maybe midway on the frontage.
Okay.
So it's kind of, it's a very, very flat hill, you know? And that, so the whole triangle that you see, the open field, is part of that flat air, flat top of the hill area.
Okay. Carol?
I'm having a little trouble on Google Earth figuring out quite where the property line is, but there is a stream that crosses either, I mean, my sense is that it's just north of the property line, perhaps. But my concern is, if the wetlands mapping was done just for this property, was the buffer from that stream, which is on the adjacent property, taken into consideration in this lot? And it's not at all clear to me that that's the case.
They're talking on the tip there, I think.
Sam, is that anything you can...
Sorry, I was typing a difficult password.
Sorry. The, I'm trying to figure out the relationship of the lot line, the, it would be the northern lot line to the stream, which is on the abutting property.
There's the lot line, and there's Alder Creek, so it's just along that northwest corner.
That's the buffer.
And that's the buffer.
That's the buffer here, so that's here.
So the trail would be going through the buffer, essentially?
The trail will be going through the buffer, right?
Okay, thank you, Beth, that's very helpful.
So that's this right here, right, right there. That's that right there.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then the stream kind of cuts in across that.
It also follows the sewer easements, so the city has a sewer easement. The sewer runs through there, so the trail is proposed to go right on top of the sewer.
Oh, this trail is running on, oh, okay.
Yeah, that's why they chose that location.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
Okay, so that sounds...
And we went over this with the Conservation Commission, and they supported the conditional use permit to, for these impacts to the buffers, for the trail.
So again, just for the public record, the impacts to the buffer mean you're impacting the buffer, and then you're returning it to its original state?
Well, we're building a trail through the buffer. We're over an existing sewer that's already been built along that. So the trail will really serve two purposes, one for pedestrian access, but then also for maintenance of the sewer line down through there.
Does the water that's on your property in that buffer area, on the east, the south side of the trail, stay on that property? I mean, is water going to be able to migrate under the sidewalk? Or which way does it flow?
It flows to the north, into the, it all flows into the stream eventually, which is at the north, you can see that in the northwest corner.
Okay, so is there, is there, the sewer that goes under there now, there's nothing on top of that now, I guess is what I'm saying. There's no berms or anything on top of that that's retaining water?
Gravel walkway.
Yeah, yes.
This is a gravel walkway. Yeah, yeah, no, not a paved surface or anything, I get that, I get that.
And actually, the wetland that you see, the bigger wetland up in the northeast corner, was created by construction of the sewer. Peter Spear comments on that in his report that was provided to you.
So aside from the sidewalks, there's no buffer encroachment with the properties that you're building?
Correct, correct, yep.
David?
And there essentially is a berm on top of the sewer today. It's essentially an access road today, right?
Today, right?
Today, right.
Okay. So I guess my point was going to be, is there, there's water on the south side, which is on their property, is that migrating over across the berm? Or how does it move? Or is it just settling to the...
It pretty much ends up in the wetland, that's up in that upper corner in this plan. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I was reading the report by, sorry, Natural Resources Consulting Services, which I assume that you retained, and they mentioned the sewer construction and the disruption of the natural rills that directed water to the north. Because when they built the city sewer 35 or 40 years ago, they just basically filled in all those rills and changed the course of the water. Is this going to have any impact in terms of, I mean, I know that you have your rain gardens and other catchment techniques to keep retaining the water. Is any, you know, is there going to be any change to this situation that was created by the sewage, so that the water would naturally, you know, go north again, or...
I wouldn't expect any change from what's happening today hydraulically, yeah.
Okay, sorry, I interrupted you, so I apologize, so...
No, that's okay.
Go ahead, interrupted you, so I apologize.
And Carol interrupted me.
No, I think I was done talking about the drains. The only thing, other thing that I would add is, you know, the density does allow 12,500 square-foot lots. We actually looked at, can we put a road in across from, is that Alder Creek Road? And get more lots, because those are big lots up on the, you know, as a triangle widens, the lots get bigger. Could we put a road in there? And we could actually fit three more lots back there, within the zoning regulations. And we decided, you know, we didn't want to do that, we didn't want to be overly aggressive with the density on this, and so we did strictly frontage lots, you know? So, where we could have fit, I don't know, if, and even if you do the math, eight and a half acres divided by 16 lots, it probably works out to, you know, the lots, the average size is much bigger than density allows, or the zoning allows. So we could have probably fit three more, we could have had 19 or maybe 20 lots there. You know, we're doing 16, so...
And again, the way you've situated them, I imagine, is there's some logic to it, obviously. And again, the point's well taken, you've got the, you've got the one, two, three, four, five, five driveway cuts on Sewell's Falls. And again, you know, I'm sensitive to what the residents are speaking about as far as the traffic, as far as adding more people and more changes to it, but there's, I don't, I can't see a way to put a road in the middle and have everything kind of facing into the middle, which was mentioned. And I know, you know, we're happy to look at cluster developments and everything around the common, you know, the common fronts, but I just don't see how you could do that on this lot. Am I missing something, or...
No, and actually, we did talk to, in our first meeting with the city, we talked about, do we want to put a road in and access all these lots from a road running down the center between Sewell's Falls and Abbott Road, kind of running parallel? And it, you know, it just didn't really seem to make sense at the time.
It really didn't fit in with the neighborhood, as far as I was concerned.
Comes a different story than with the trash collection. I mean, I had a lot of other plowing, a lot of other things that...
We thought of a lot of things. We thought of, okay, you know, because what we do as developers, we try to think how to, we're visionaries, we just look at things as we think we can build them.
So, I just, can I have one more comment? About the trail, you know, that was a, the city staff's suggestion, really, and we thought it was a good suggestion. We don't really benefit from it that much, in that it was kind of a trade-off, you know? If you build a trail, you know, there is a sidewalk on Abbott Road, on the other side of the road. But if the board wants to eliminate that trail, you know, you know, we're happy to build the sidewalk in lieu of that, you know? And then we wouldn't need the waiver, and, you know, it's...
We think we've designed a good project. I disagree with him.
We'll take... We'll take the sidewalk.
No.
No?
No.
Oh, split?
We've got a plan in front of you with...
So my, my concern is the sidewalk. My only, I mean, I understand and I'm sensitive to all the other issues that were brought up, but walking out of, out of a house on Abbott Road, where do they go? And that's, that is a concern. Sewell's Falls is a different story, I think, but, but there is concern from, from my perspective on, on safety and getting people across the street and up to, up to the school safely.
And, and the kids would have to cross the street either way. So they walk down the street and they have to cross Sewell's Falls Road, or they walk across Abbott Road. I think Sewell's Falls Road sees more traffic than Abbott Road, personally. We didn't, you know, our traffic study didn't really do the analysis to that, that degree, but we did do traffic counts. But, but I live in the area. I know, I know the area very well, and my experience is that Sewell's Falls Road gets a brunt of the traffic.
So you're a ten-year-old kid walking to school. Are you going to cut through the backs of the houses? I mean, I just, again...
Well, it depends how the school bus is going to...
Where the school bus is coming.
Okay.
Well, this is walkable, isn't it? This is walk...
It's walkable, yeah. Well, for grade school.
Well, who...
For grade school, yeah.
Who knows today? They pick the kids up at every, every house if you get behind the school bus.
I'm just trying to think of where those kids are going to... I mean, I would walk through the woods if I could. Again, these lots might be fenced. You might have, you know, different scenarios. So we can't do anything about that, I guess. One more question. So on the density, there was a density question, and you answered the question. You're, you're not even pushing the density as far as you really could push the density as far as the lot coverage goes, right? Yes?
Can I just make a clarification for the gentleman that brought up the medium density residential? I just noticed what it was. There's an error on the agenda that says it's in the medium density residential district.
Nice.
So that was the confusion. It is actual, it's correct in Sam's report that it's the single-family residential district.
And I would state for the record as well, that medium density residential district with sewer is the exact same dimensional requirements as the RS district.
Right, right. So there's no difference in the lot sizes, right?
Nope.
Right, I just wanted to clarify that for you.
Thanks, Beth. Okay, any other questions? Comments from the board?
Questions from the board?
Certainly, fire.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Hillstroh was asking about the timing for the development, whether you were going to put them all in at once, or...
Yeah. Our intention is we'll probably put five, six, seven up at a time and go from there. We certainly, with, obviously with the demand for housing, okay, as fast as you can build them, you, okay, they go out the door.
Yeah.
You know, okay, I think I would be very confident that this is less than an eighteen month project from now. I mean, that's, that's one a month, I think, I'm ultra-conservative.
Okay, thank you.
So I know there's some ambiguity on the, what's being built. It's not cookie cutter, it's not pick this, pick that. Any, you don't have, publicly don't have to state anything at all, but just for the, for my own edification, are they, where do you see these houses? Are they higher-end houses? Are they two-story? Are they single-story?
No, no. They're, they're, they're some type of colonial, okay, center entrance, side entrance, somewhere between, you know, eighteen hundred and twenty-one hundred feet and...
Two-car garage? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I think it fits in the neighborhood. I think it's a modest house in today's market. You know, the only difference is that we do, we put some hardwood floors in there and put a...
Granite countertop, so, and again, I just, I just wanted to get an idea if they were, you know, they were entry-level housing or a different type of house.
They're, they're not McMansions by any means. I mean, that...
We need that kind of, we need entry-level housing.
That's what people are, that's what people are asking.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments, questions from the board? Amanda?
There was a comment made from the condominium association about the property line and the division and the congregating behind or in between these two developments. And I believe it was even mentioned about possibly there being some kind of suggestion of a fence or of that nature. And I just didn't know if that had ever been any consideration.
This is the first we've heard of it. It certainly is not on the plan. You know, that's, that's very wooded in there now.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I think it's kind of natural buffer as it is.
And, and there is no homeowner, homeowners association, so question would be, who would maintain the fence? It's a city easement, so I guess it would fall on the city.
Well, the fence isn't in the easement, in terms of the easement documents. So, I mean, that would be something we'd have to, the city would have to be willing to accept that. And as of right now, I can say that the city would be willing to accept the maintenance of that.
So you're going to put an access gate on the sidewalk? Remove, remove the wood fence, provide a barrier gate to prevent vehicle access on the Sewell's Falls side, right?
Yeah, on both sides, I think.
On both sides, provide a barrier gate. Okay. Good with that? Okay. All right, any other questions, comments, concerns? Any other follow-up from the audience? Thanks, guys. Could you step back? Thank you. And again, if you could just state your name for the record?
Of course. Sure, it's Meredith Raska. I own seventy-four and seventy-six Metalac Drive.
Okay.
As a, as a business person and whatnot, I certainly understand this is private property. I understand they have a right to do what they choose to on the private property. Please understand that.
Okay.
I get that.
Yep.
I totally understand. Where I just question is, through the wooded area, which now comes up to the barn, that area is all wet. I was just walking through there, this path, not through the property, but next to the property on Sewell's Falls Road this past weekend. I walk my two dogs there all the time. The whole thing is wet. So I don't, I understand that that does not fall within the wetlands easement, but that water does have to go somewhere. And I know they will be taking down trees to plant, or not to plant, to build these homes. And I understand they're going to be planting some too. I can appreciate that. But it just, it just feels, it just feels a little much. It feels like that part maybe isn't being taken into consideration. And that is what I wanted to share. I also understand, too, a fence would be ideal for us, just in the sense of, we already, like I said before, have a lot of people that come on our land to use it that do not belong there. You know, we pay a lot, we pay the same taxes as everyone else. You know, that's certainly a concern if there's kids there that they are playing on our land, and then that becomes a liability for us. Because before you know it, Timmy falls, breaks an arm, and doesn't see our no trespassing sign, and then we get sued. So just certain things to consider. I understand it can happen in any situation, but bringing in, you know, eighteen to twenty-one hundred square foot homes, kind of that middle-class housing, you are bound to have a lot of kids there. So again, just a concern, and I really thank you guys for your consideration.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Okay, if there's no more comments or questions, we will close the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Any follow-up from staff? And again, there's not a lot to look at here on our side, but any, any other comments or questions or concerns that have been raised need to be addressed?
We'll just want to add a note on the condition of approval to amend the trail easement to include the sidewalk portion that's within the private area of Lot Sixteen along the frontage.
Okay, remind me of that, remind me of that if we get to that soon. So again, as a, as a follow-up, and you can't appreciate if you don't do this as often as we do, sitting behind the table, but when a sixteen-lot development comes to us, there's usually ten or twelve waivers, and there's a bunch of conditional use permits to waive this and waive this and change this and change that. And this project, surprisingly, doesn't have those. And typically, in a project like this, the, the issues that opposition can get around are issues regarding, you know, you shouldn't do this for this reason, and you shouldn't do this for this reason. Without those, there's not a lot of things that the board as a whole can look at and recommend. We certainly can recommend, and we can talk about it, if we'd like to talk about it. You know, the sidewalk is an issue, and it's a concern for me, and I think the school-age kids is a concern for me. And I don't know if we have any thoughts or comments or observations we'd like to banter around. Anybody? David?
I'm just going to make a comment. I'm very sensitive to whoever talked about...
Pull up to the microphone.
I'm very sensitive to whoever brought up the fact that the kids walking on Sewell's Falls Road to school. I share your concern for that, Richard. And I'm not seeing a significant solution in any of the, in any of the proposed, including the audience who have commented on what might, what might we look at in terms of moving the kids safely?
Options.
Right, what are our, what are our options? And I don't see it.
Plenty of houses on Sewell's Falls now.
Right.
There's got to be a mechanism to keep them out of the street in the winter.
Yeah, and how do we do that? How does this board do that?
No, yeah, it's not us.
Oh, yeah, right.
Public safety.
What we can do is recommend.
Right.
Hey, Rich, could I, could I address that?
Yes, certainly, David, thank you.
So we haven't talked much about the sidewalk that they're proposing on Sewell's Falls Road. Right now, all the, all the drainage on Sewell's Falls Road pretty much percolates off the street right into, right onto this property, which has posed kind of a challenge, but an interesting, but I think they've come up with an interesting solution to run a sidewalk down that west side of Sewell's Falls Road by incorporating an eight-foot-wide grass strip that will be a swale to manage the stormwater. But it will kind of mimic like the sidewalk that you see on East Side Drive that goes along Havenwood, where the sidewalk sort of meanders through the trees. In some places on, on East Side Drive, it's six feet away from the pavement, some places it's ten feet. So this is, this is, this is a nice eight-foot-wide separation from the street. And we're working with some innovative ways to get that stormwater from the swale into the properties through some breaks in the sidewalk. And so a real benefit to this sidewalk is there, there is a, there's a sidewalk that comes all the way up to the sewer easement today from Flume Street. And so this sidewalk will actually connect the sidewalk that starts on Flume Street and goes all the way up and connects up to the sidewalk on Abbott, at Abbott and Sewell's Falls with a crosswalk there from, from Sewell's Falls across that intersection to the sidewalk on the other side of Abbott. So, so that's going to provide a real benefit for walkers that are, that are coming, you know, from Sewell's, from Flume. And then one of our sidewalk priorities in the, in the sidewalk plan is actually to build a sidewalk to connect Flume with Manor, and then go all the way down to Park at, near the Sewell's Falls Bridge. So, so this is, this is, you know, provides a real nice connector sidewalk.
So on the plan, David, it shows the sidewalk on Sewell's Falls kind of ending at the pant leg intersection there at Abbott Road. Is that, is that going to cross down Sewell's Falls at a, at a, at a crosswalk?
Yes, so, so yes, so there, so this project constructs a crosswalk there.
Behind the green on, on the, am I too far up? So behind the, yeah, I'm right there.
Right there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a crosswalk to Abbott.
And we've had them locate that crosswalk in a, in a, such that we won't actually need to redo it when we eventually straighten out the, or square up that pant leg intersection.
Correct. Is there a sidewalk on the other side of Abbott?
There is.
All the way down?
All the way down, right.
So it's two, four, six, seven houses. Right? Am I right, Sam?
On Abbott?
Six, seven houses on Abbott. Now, there's one up on the end, next to the trail.
Yeah, there's seven, and then the one on the point fronts on both Abbott and Sewell's.
Yeah. But the one on the trail with the longer, narrower lot comes out there, right?
On Abbott, yep.
But that one has the crosswalk right there.
Crosswalk, right.
Yes. So there will be crossing opportunities at the northern and southern extents of this property.
I don't know that we can do more than that. I just... Not comfortable with it?
I can't support those Abbott Road houses just... I mean, I drive that road a lot. I know what the traffic is like. At the time, people are picking up school kids and dropping off school kids. I mean, the traffic is backed up. I don't know.
David, can you see clear for a sidewalk right from the existing little small piece of sidewalk that's there, all the way up to the pant leg end on Abbott Road, screwing this up from the project perspective? As far as, as far as the eight-foot right-way and the, you know, the, does that cause any problems as far as the engineering goes?
Well, it poses a, kind of a new stormwater issue. So right now, there's not, there's not proposed to be a curb. So, which is one of the reasons we separated the sidewalk with an eight-foot-wide swale on the Sewell's Falls Road to manage that stormwater from the street. So when you put a sidewalk in, you've got to do something to manage that stormwater that gets trapped by the sidewalk. So, yeah, so they would need to provide probably a curb and closed drainage, figure out how to, how to get that, well, I guess tie into the drain that connects up on, at Sewell's Falls and Abbott.
Just a question for you, then. When you say it traps the stormwater off the road, it acts as a dam.
Does.
And somewhere that we were talking at some point about basically curb breaks into something. What is that, do you have a sense for what that something is?
Well, it's good, there's actually a good example. When we constructed the new roundabout at Exit Sixteen.
Yep.
The sidewalk that is on the south side of, of the roundabout actually has, there's breaks in the curb and, and, and concrete V channels with a little grate over it. The sidewalk goes through that allows that stormwater to go from the street through the sidewalk and into a rain garden on the other side.
Okay.
So that's, that's, that's what we've been discussing with this project, and actually constructing some rain gardens in the front lawns of these homes so that, because that's where the stormwater goes today, and that's where we'd like to get it.
Right. And, and in addition, I can see kids walking down that sidewalk with a fairly significant puddle eight feet away that the cars that are going sixty miles an hour down there, we've got some wet kids.
Well, it's supposed to, it's not supposed to be a puddle. It's supposed to drain into the ground.
I know, I know. That's why I was questioning about, then, then in your experience, how often do those breaks have to happen in, in order to deal with the amount of water that was created in that impervious street?
Right. They'd have to have one between every driveway.
Okay.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Byrne?
Thank you. I note on the, on the plan here, there's a, on this Abbott Road side of the development, there's a fifteen-foot sewer easement that I assume is the city's, right? What would be the practicality, and I'm throwing this out, of extending the stone-dust trail along that frontage in, within the right-of-way? I realize that's the front yards of some people. But that would provide an access, that would provide a throughway for kids coming from those homes to walk down to the pant leg and cross over the crosswalk to the sidewalk that's on the other side of Abbott Road.
I think that would be a real maintenance headache for the city.
I'm sorry?
It would be a real maintenance headache for the city.
Right.
I'm assuming this would be a sidewalk that the city would take on as a, you know?
I wasn't thinking of it as a sidewalk. I was thinking of it as an extension of the trail. Who's going to maintain the trail?
Right, so the, the position of where that would be, because you have, where the utility poles are located, you would be positioning this sidewalk on private property. So it would need to be-
Let's call it a walkway.
Sure, so this walkway would be an easement. If it's for the public good, it would need to be an easement. An easement held by the city on private property. I couldn't say that the city would be out there plowing that sidewalk in the wintertime. Walkway. And I don't know how the developer would feel about that, but the reason that the Sewer Si, Sewers Falls sidewalk works is because they're granting us right-of-way.
Right.
That, that is a game changer. And I know if they were to do that on this side, they would have to reevaluate some of their lot configurations because you would need too much space into some of these lots where they wouldn't meet minimum lot sizes.
Just a thought.
Yeah, I know, I, again, we looked at it 25 different ways this Sunday on a couple of these things. So, any other questions or comments? Teresa, no?
Nope.
Any other follow-up from the board or from the staff, no? Okay, so before us tonight is again the recommendations with precious few, actually just one conditional use permit, right?
Yes, for the wetland.
Okay. So I'm gonna take that as a single piece. So 4.1 in your packet to grant conditional use permit per Article 2843D. CUP is required for certain disturbances of wetland buffers of the zoning ordinance given the Conservation Commission and staff are in support of the trail location and resulting wetland buffer impacts are minimal and the application, the application has submitted, the applicant has submitted a complete CUP narrative. Would someone like to make a motion to grant the conditional use permit as outlined?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries 4.2 is to grant ADR approval for the building architectural styles and material landscaping and site layout. Now, I noticed this on the plan, on the, on the report earlier. Since we don't have architectural styles, materials, and landscaping and layout information, I mean, how, how are we approving it from an ADR perspective?
Those aren't in your packet?
I didn't see any, you know, this is building lot one and this is what's gonna be in there.
At the end of the packet, there should be building elevations.
There is.
There are.
There are.
I apologize. Sorry for that, Sam, I got hung up on the plans.
Elevations.
Elevations, yeah. So would someone like to make a motion to grant ADR approval for the building architectural style, materials, landscaping, and site layout with the understanding that the applicant will use salt tolerant species for front drainage plans? Revis house designs so that no, nor garage, no garage protrudes beyond the plane of the front door and that renderings and elevations reflect the same house designs. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that ADR approval as outlined?
Still moved.
Second.
Seconded, a motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries 4.3 is to grant major subdivision approval for the 16-lot subdivision at 145 Abbott Road subject to the following conditions to be fulfilled within one year. Those are outlined in your packet in conditions one through 12. Any revisions to that, Sam?
Yes, we need to add 13 to amend the trail easement to include the walkway on private property of Lot 16.
So item number 13 in the packet will be to amend the trail easement. Say it again, amend trail easement?
To include the walkway along the frontage of Lot 16.
The walkway, to include the walkway along the frontage of, on Lot 16.
Yep.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to grant major subdivision approval as outlined? I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, pardon me?
Karen's opposed.
Say something, sorry, didn't hear you. So one, one opposed, that motion carries. You are all set, thank you very much, and thank you everyone for your testimony. We do appreciate it.
You voted in favor on the rest.
Yes. You did? You voted in favor?
Kind of abstained on the rest.
Well, you gotta say something. You can't just assume we know what you're doing. Okay, let's read item 8G into the record.
North Point Engineering, on behalf of Paul O. Boffinger Family Trust of 2019, requests major subdivision approval for a 20-unit cluster subdivision for property off Shaker Road in the medium-density residential district.
Okay, we've got no determination of completeness component on this. It was determined complete. We will open the public hearing if we could get a staff update on this report, on this project?
Sure. So the applicant is requesting a couple of waivers, the length of dead-end streets and sidewalks required to not provide sidewalks. This cul-de-sac is 150 feet longer than what is required, but they have provided additional fire hydrants and safety features. And that's sort of our biggest issue with the, the longer roads is to make sure that we have the length for fire suppression. So, staff is in support of that waiver. Sidewalks required, Shaker Road, it's pretty much wetlands along the whole frontage and it would require pretty much redoing Shaker Road where there's no existing sidewalk anywhere else. So staff is in support of, of that waiver. And then there was conditional use permit for the impact of wetland buffers. Unfortunately, last week, there was not a quorum at the Conservation Commission, so there is no recommendation from Conservation Commission.
Right.
They did come before the Conservation Commission in February, and they had requested they come back and show alternatives just to show that this was the least impactful alternative. And they will talk about that tonight, just so you can see that information that Conservation Commission had requested if you choose to move forward with the conditional use permit for the wetland buffer impacts.
And they didn't have any other comments or questions or concerns?
That was the biggest issue. They did do a site visit and recognized the limitations of the property where wetlands do cover that entire frontage. And there was recommendations of looking at adjacent parcels and I believe the developer did reach out to abutters who were not willing to grant them that, but I'll let them talk to that.
Okay. Welcome to the table. If you guys could state your names for the record?
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Jeff Lewis from North Point Engineering. Megan Spain is with me. She's from the developer Merck Properties representing the applicant tonight. Just for the record, I am also a member of the Conservation Commission, just so you folks are aware of that. What I'd like to do is walk you through just this parcel, this, this parcel, and I'll tell you right off, right off the top, does have some drainage concerns. I believe that you may be hearing some testimonies from some neighbors tonight. It's one of the things that kind of slowed us down with this project. We've been looking at it for almost a year now, trying to come up with the best alternative for it. So I'm gonna just take a few minutes to walk you through that. Other than that, I think it's a pretty straightforward 20-unit cluster site plan subdivision. So this is the, let's see if I can, be hard to point up here. So this is the property. This is just the city GIS map showing this 16-acre long parcel right here. It's hard to read, but this is Shaker Road right here. Let's go down here, this is Exit 16. So you come up Shaker Road. This is the, what I call the Pico Drive subdivision, residential subdivision in here. This is the Oak Hill, Oak Knoll subdivision, back here off of Oak Hill Road. Obviously, the pond in the back. So we are right here kind of nestled into Shaker Road before you get too far out up Shaker Road. Just gonna scroll down a little bit more. This just zooms in, same again, the city GIS map. So you can see the parcel right here in the center. It is a long, narrow parcel. It does directly abut the conservation land that's part of the subdivision to the south. You can see here shaded green, that has conservation land that goes out actually a little bit onto Oak Hill Road. It comes in here and it butts us. And then we just have single-family residential properties are all developed all around us. This, this is a, a house right here with a big lot in the back. There's another house adjacent to us here with a big open area in the back. House right next to us on the south, and then some, some parcels on the, on the other side of Shaker Road, a couple of which extend all the way over to Mountain Road over here. So one of the interesting things about this-
Looks dry.
It's dry, yeah, it's very dry.
Looks dry.
Right now it is. On paper. So there is a watershed area that basically comes right here from Oak Hill Road. Oak Hill Road kind of serves as the divide between water flowing down to the pond and then towards the river if you're on the west side of Oak Hill Road. So we have a drainage here that pretty much is what's, what you can kind of see on this map. The back of the lots up here, the back of the lots down here. And everything flows into this very flat area that comes through our property. And I'm just gonna show you some contours, because I'm an engineer and I want to, and I have control of the mouse. But again, this is the same view. There's only about 10 feet of fall from Oak Hill Road all the way down to Shaker Road over that long distance.
How many feet?
About 10.
10 feet, okay.
Yep, so it's pretty flat all through in here. There's a couple little knobs of land that are on our, our parcel up in here, which is like the, the good upland that we want to develop. If you can read contours, then you can see that this kind of turns into a little seasonal stream that flows right through here, right through the frontage of our property and right up to this northwest corner of the property where there is a culvert under, under Shaker Road. And that's kind of the, the crux of our, of our issue here. Just panning across Shaker Road now. So on this, on this zoomed-in portion, this is the frontage of our parcel right here. It's, it's pretty much all wetland in here. And the situation that exists out there is, is this whole section of Shaker Road, which is built through a very flat area, is, is built up above the natural ground and it really acts as, you know, a dam or kind of a levee. You know, small scale, I mean, it's not holding back a pond of water out here, but it does allow this whole flat wooded area in here to, to provide some flood storage in this little seasonal stream. And it's really compounded by the culvert. The culvert's right here under the road, and it's a very small diameter, 12-inch concrete culvert. It's about six or seven times too small to carry the, the peak flows in this, in this, this little stream that flows through here. So what happens is that water all backs up on our property, kind of floods out this whole area here. And then, you know, our models indicate, and you may hear some testimony from that tonight as well, the water flows over the road when it gets too high and, and goes downhill, which is down here under these properties here. So it's an exist, it's, it's clearly an existing drainage concern out there with a problem with the undersized culvert with some residential properties across the street. It doesn't help that as soon as that culvert daylight's on the other side of this road right here, it immediately goes back underground through about a, I don't know, 80-foot section of another small diameter culvert. Then it goes into an open, you can kind of see it right through here where I'm pointing, an open, open ditch until it gets into the backyard of these two lots, which I believe are the Murray's lots over there. Then it goes back underground. They have a culvert under their lot, front, front and side yards right here that's again an undersized culvert. So we have this series of just undersized culverts that can't convey the whole flow coming from that, from that watershed up here. It ends up dumping, it'll catch base on a mountain road and immediately across the street, there's a big gully. And if you go out there, you'll see the amount of water that is coming down here and trying to get through these parcels, through these very small culverts. So I haven't seen this in big flood events, but I would not doubt that there is drainage problems coming down onto these lower lots. So it's one of the things we really needed to, to, to take into consideration, make sure that, you know, we have a responsibility to make sure we're not making that any worse. It's very hard for us to solve that problem because it's an existing problem. It's been there for a long time. It's a, a city road with culverts. We can't, you know, there'd be some desire maybe to upgrade that culvert under Shaker Road, but that could be even worse for the folks downstream. There'd be a lot more water coming at them more frequently. So it's one of the things we're concerned about. I just really wanted to talk about that because it kind of leads into the, I thought I had all these things in one PDFs. I'm sorry about that, I'm gonna have to open up my plans here. I think I have it in here. So this is, I'm just gonna share this, is one of the exhibits. This is basically our existing conditions plan shown on one sheet, just so you can see the whole property. And what I have highlighted on here shaded is the wellens and the welland buffers. So if you look at the frontage, the, it's, that's really an orange color in the middle. That's the wetland. And then the, the light green is the 50-foot welland buffer. And this kind of dark line here is the little stream channel that flows right through. So you can see we have all this wet area or welland buffer area in the front of the parcel. And we have this really nice kind of high and dry land in the middle of the parcel, which is what we're trying to get to, to develop for residential project. And we, we've looked at the best way to utilize that, that property. We had started out looking at a conventional subdivision. We had looked at trying to get some maybe townhouse units in there, attached units. And the, the biggest issue is figuring out how are we gonna get access back there? We gotta, we know we gotta cross a well and we know we have to cross a welland buffer. How can we do that in the least impacting way? The first thing we tried to do, and there's an alternative in there, it's almost easier to see right here, this green area is the welland buffer, not the welland. So there's one kind of school of thought that would say, well, let's come through there and then cross the, cross right here and try to limit the, the impact of the wetland. If we do that, we're pretty much disturbing this entire welland buffer. We're also kind of going right through and bisecting this, this welland, which is flood storage. I mean, it does serve a purpose. From my perspective, that's the main, you know, the, our main priority is to preserve flood, flood storage there. There's limited wildlife, you know, habitat in there. We did do a wildlife habitat study. We do have wellens permits, so that's all being looked at. But from my perspective, it's drainage is the number one concern. So we, what we ended up with is deciding, well, we really need to come in at the north end of the property up here, which will leave this whole area here kind of intact for flood storage. It also keeps a, a larger area intact for, for any wildlife quarters that may be there, turtles and things like that. So this is the plan, again, this is just an exhibit, but this is the plan that we have before you folks tonight that shows this 1,100-foot cul-de-sac coming in with the units, as you can see in the upland area. We do have a just under 10,000-square-foot welland impact to cross that wetland and that little stream right there. We are proposing a, a much larger culvert than exists immediately downstream of us just so that, you know, if, if this culvert was ever upgraded as part of some large municipal improvement project on Shaker Road, we'd at least have it sized properly under, under our drive. But most importantly, it keeps a lot of this intact and able to still be used for flood storage. We obviously have to come through because of the shape of that. We have impact to the, to the buffer. The lighter purple here is the impact to the welland buffer. So we have a significant impact to the buffer. All of that is, is needed to, to get into the, the site and get to the build of their area of the site where we have 20, 20, uh, single-family, a couple of dup, some of them are duplexes, but 20 residential units in the cluster subdivision. So I want to talk about that a little bit more. Actually, I'm gonna stay on that topic for, for one second because it's easy to see on this plan. We have, you can see right here, we have a detention basin, an open surface detention basin. It's a gravel wetland detention basin to provide stormwater treatment. It really is gonna pick up all of the drainage from this whole back half of the, of the site, the road, the driveways, the front and backyards of all the units. So anything that we're developing, we're picking up the water and bringing it over here. We also have another one, you can see it right here, at the, at the low end of the site, as close as we can possibly get to the downstream low end of the property. And this one, this is the same thing, a gravel wetland detention basin that'll pick up kind of the first half of the road, all the units, all the yards. So we are, we, we, we do have both of those. We also have this elongated one in the back of the first few units here, which is up in some of the higher land, which would be used to infiltrate stormwater. We want to try to infiltrate as much as we can so we're not increase, we're not increasing any of the volume of, of stormwater after the development either. So all of these are oversized basins. What I would call oversized basins for something that you would normally see on this type, this size of development because we really have no room for error here. We can't, we really can't have an, an increase at all from our development because most of the water that's coming down to this culvert is this off-site runoff that's coming not from us, but through this stream. So in order to ensure that we have no increase to that, we, we really need to make sure we capture everything we can. So we've taken a long look at that. That's part of the reason we have the road coming in right here. One of the, one of the things that the Conservation Commission had, had asked us to look at was could you even move this road further up a little bit more so you didn't have as much impact right in here? And one of the reasons we didn't want to do that was because where we have this stormwater basin sighted is the lowest possible area on the site for us to capture water. If we were bringing the road in, I'm gonna show you this next, this is one of the, well, here's, these are a couple of the alternatives that, that Beth alluded to that we had intended to show to the Conservation Commission last week. This is one that just shows that road coming, coming through here. You can see how much buffer impact it would be. We'd still have a buffer impact on the other side. We'd still want to build a retention basin over here. So it's pretty similar to the same amount of impacts as, as what we're proposing. This was the other alternative that would bring the road in. We have a little bit less impact up here if we brought the road in here, but we wouldn't be able to have our basin there. We'd have to move it uphill, which would put it over here and get in the buffer in order to keep it as low as possible. And it's, it wouldn't get as much of the road runoff. So these are, these are just some of the things we had looked at early on before we settled in on, on, on this layout as being the ideal layout. I'm gonna digress from drainage right there unless, unless there's any questions. I'm gonna quickly go through the plans just to let you know, so you can take a look at those. a look at those. Um, we do have a full set of subdivision improvement plans here. Um, that's our overview sheet, which we were just looking at with the colored markups showing the twenty units. Uh, we have the existing condition survey plan that Bartlet's office prepared for us. Uh, they also did the, prepared the condominium subdivi- uh, site plan, so these will be condominium units. Um, so on here, we're showing uh, forty by fifty-two foot boxes for the, for the units, so all of the proposed houses would fit within that forty foot wide by fifty-two foot deep unit. Uh, we have an additional twelve feet on the back of those for limited common areas, so that would be your decks or your patios off the back of those units. Um, the kind of dark hatched, hatched area is just the driveway uh, in the front, which would be a limited common area. Those are all uh, two car, two cars wide, because every one of these units would have a two car garage. Um, so these, this other plan shows that. Um, we do have some additional parking, we designated right here kind of center to the development where we propose to put a little mail station, um, so the mail would be centralized and some visitor parking right there off of the road. Um, this is the second sheet of that. Uh, then we have our, our engineering plans, this is just a site layout plan, again, showing the impacts, the buffer and the wellin impacts, uh, the dimensions of, of the road and, and the like, uh, geometry for the intersection and for the, for the parking areas. And this is our detailed grading and drainage plan, which I've pretty much already talked about, so I'm not gonna go into much detail on that, although you can see all the detail for the detention basin systems here, the culvert under the drive, um, and obviously all of our, all of our grading. Um, we have a utility plan, we do have water and sewer uh, for this and all underground utilities. One thing I would note, and this plan's kind of chopped up here, um, this is our frontage on Shaker Road down here. The wa- the existing water and sewer uh, in Shaker Road actually ends right at the, near the end of our property here. This is our southern property corner right here, the municipal services end here. So we'll actually be extending those, both the water and the sewer, up in Shaker Road uh, to our proposed driveway here. And then we'll have water and sewer uh, in the road. So we do have fire hydrants um, in full water here, which is one of the reasons uh, we think we're, we're okay asking for the waiver to extend the cul-de-sac, which normally would be limited at a thousand, at a thousand feet, but since we do have the water and the fire hydrants there, and the fire department uh, is supportive of us being able to extend that, just that extra hundred and fifty feet. Um, road profiles, not too interesting, I'm sure. Uh, landscape plan, so we do have um, street trees that we'll put along the uh, the frontage of our new road. We do have some kind of a typical unit planting detail. I'm sure we'll end up with more uh, unit planting as, you know, people buy these and have the ability to, to add more. Um, one thing I did want to point out here is that we, we are planning to use um, the trees that are existing trees that are in this whole section right here where we don't have any driveways, um, as well as our wellin crossing here and along Shaker Road as part of our tree count, since we do have a lot of frontage that is naturally wooded right now. Um, I think there's fif- I think it's fifty trees um, we're counting for in the, in that wooded area. But you can see it's pretty densely packed in here um, along the frontage where we do have it. So I think we, 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 we feel meeting the intent of, of the regulations there. Um, certainly if we find out that we can't salvage as many trees out here, we'll work with staff to, to supplement this and if we need to add more trees along the frontage, we will. Um, erosion control plan, obviously very critical to protect the wellens while we're building this. Um, these are just details of the stormwater plans and uh, typical city construction details. I did want to point out, down here, we do have a detail on one of these sheets for the uh, sh- streetlights. So we just have a residential style, um, and there's a twelve foot pole, just kind of s- scattered throughout, not overly lit, just enough to, to provide some safety in there. Um, and cross-sections, this, I also wanted to point out here, this is our open space exhibit. We are required to have a certain amount of open space as part of this, designated open space as part of this cluster subdivision, because we are submitting this application under the cluster subdivision regulations. So this just kind of shows the open space, the gray areas, just the, the units and the limited common areas and the, and the roadway. So that's just kind of grayed out. Everything that's not gray is open space. Um, we're, we have to meet certain criteria for the open space in terms of amount of buildable area, um, amount of upland, you know, non-wet area, um, amount of steep slopes. So on here, we have, we have a couple of restrictions in open space. We obviously have the wellens, which we talked about, which is the blue hatch. We do have some s- minor, you know, small areas of what the zoning ordinance would call steep slopes. I mean, nothing more than, you know, eight or ten feet in, in height right there, but we've excluded those from this calculation. Um, and everything that's white on this page would be considered uh, usable open space. And we, we are well in excess of requirements for uh, open space. This plan, we just intended to demonstrate that. Um, I would also say we're, we're, we're well, well shy of the allowable density. Um, I think thirty-six units is what we have for allowable density. Yeah, thirty-six units would be our allowable density, we're proposing twenty units, so um, we really didn't want to get into a situation where we're trying to go back further out into the development here and make use of some of the open spaces out here. Uh, we really wanted to cut it off um, right here so that we were not impacting the back wellens or the wellin buffer around this, around this back wellin. Um, I'm gonna show you real quick the architectural elevations. So this is the style of homes that we presented to the Architectural Design Review Committee. Um, Megan and her company are working right now with the architect to develop these further. Uh, this is what we had submitted and I think the ADR was generally pleased with the, the look of these, they wanted to make sure that um, this, you know, something similar to this uh, is what gets built. They understand that the color of the units will depend on maybe the end user and what they, what they want, but as long as it's generally conforming to this, uh, they were pretty happy.
So I don't see those in our plans.
You don't see these in your plans?
No.
They're in there.
Come on. Where are they? Reports plans in supplemental, supplemental wellens.
They're on a, uh, they may be on the plan set, uh, for you, I-
They're not on my plans.
Are they at the very end of the plan set? Because I, we submitted them like this, by the, at the end of the sh- plans.
They're not in mine.
They were in last, last week, a month's packet, two packet, two.
Oh, maybe in the original plans.
Oh, they were in the original one.
They're not in my plan at all. So for the record, can you just make sure that we've got what we're looking at on the screen? Because it's definitely not in mine.
Yeah, we do. That's my error.
Again?
Ooh, ooh, ooh.
You said you were gonna blame everything on me, well, notice.
That's cold, Mr. Chairman.
So just for the record, we'll, what we're looking at is what we're, what we're-
What you have, yes.
What will be in the plan, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it under supplemental?
Sidewalks, the folks just had a nice long conversation about sidewalks, I'm gonna flip back to this real quick. Um, we have a twenty-six foot wide-
It's under supplemental.
No.
Not my fault, Rich.
Supplemental?
There's two supplementals.
Oh, sorry.
Just had a little chairman discipline.
Sorry, Faye, I just had to save my reputation here.
My mistake, Beth, I apologize. We're blaming you for that.
Just hit him, Beth.
All right. We, we, we have a waiver request for sidewalks as well. Um, we have a, we only have twenty units here. Um, we have, do have a twenty-six foot wide paved road. Um, and we feel that, that, that's more than adequate for this, for a dead end road, um, about a dead end road with twenty units, um, it's less than twenty-six feet wide, there's absolutely no reason for the sidewalks there. I think it would be excessive uh, here, so we're asking for that waiver. That waiver also includes Shaker Road. Um, Shaker Road does not have any sidewalks on it anywhere. It's, especially for us right here, we, we would have significant wellin impacts and drainage uh, issues if we were to try to put a sidewalk in there and it would be, it would go to nowhere in both directions. So I think it's um, fairly straightforward and justifiable for us to not have sidewalks and hopefully you support that waiver. Um, and then we have the waiver for the length of the cul-de-sac, which is only a hundred and fifty feet longer than what the regulations acquire. Again, we have water in there. In my experience, that's a, a regulation that's usually utilized when you don't have fire hydrants uh, or fire coverage, so I think we do have support from the fire department on that. Um, and we are requesting a conditional use impact, uh, conditional use permit for the needed wetland uh, impacts, the wellin buffer impacts.
Okay. Cut you off.
Thank you, thank you.
Questions from the board? Byron.
Yeah, thanks, just two questions. Uh, one, uh, your, your street lamps, are they, are they going to be uh, dark skies conducive? Are they?
Absolutely.
Excellent, all right. Second question is, what's, what, what's the diameter of the culvert under your driveway?
Thirty-six inches.
Thirty-six, okay.
Thirty-six inches is, is what we've identified it to be, to be hydraulically adequate for the, the flow that goes through there. Um, we've had some comments back from the city, we're waiting on comments back from the wellins bureau right now because it is a stream, it is a, a seasonal stream, um, so there may be comments to maybe make that bigger or more of a box to, so um, that's kind of still hanging out there, but whatever, whatever it needs to be, we, we will.
It's, it's gonna be more adequate than the other culverts.
Absolutely, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Uh, David.
Um, just, I, I couldn't really tell based on your, your, the pictures of your elevations, but we uh, we've talked extensively, this, this board, um, about the garage extending beyond the front doors.
Yeah, some of that, too.
That's in the ADR.
And I, does this apply here in this situation, Sam?
That was an ADR recommendation. I don't know, I wasn't-
We're working with the architects right now to have the plans reviewed to meet ADR um, comments.
Okay.
But it is not, the ordinance has not been changed to require, that'll be in the future code that requires that. So that discussion was for the future code. So they, they are currently in compliance with our-
Where we are now.
However, ADR has recommended.
We just prefer it to be back, yeah.
And we agree to that. We've seen the ADR uh, recommendations that you have before you, we're absolutely fine with that, we, we want to do that. So the, as Megan mentioned, the, the units that they're working on the floor plans will have the garages recessed, uh, somewhat more than these are so, so far forward.
I like the design, but-
Yeah, yep.
It's just something we've struggled with for a long time now.
Yeah.
Couple of years.
So my concern is, is the Conservation Commission hasn't weighed in on this. I'm not a hundred percent confident in making a decision without Conservation Commission having a look at this, um, particularly since it, it, I mean, I, I read through the, the minutes and I read through the notes, but are, are we as a, a staff, are we as staff, are we as a board comfortable with what's being presented without Conservation Commission having a final say?
It's up to you. I mean, so they're advisory, um, they, they are not required to look at conditional use permits. They, we do as a policy have them review conditional use permits. Um, staff, with the alternatives that were presented, they addressed all the concerns that the Conservation Commission brought up last month, just to show that they are doing the least impactful um, alternative, which they have shown to you tonight. So I take that.
Take the fifth. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Byron.
Byron's saving me.
Byron's saving me, just for the record.
Doesn't the state, doesn't the State Department of Environmental Services have to review and approve this plan?
The-
I think they do.
For the wellens.
The wellens.
Yes.
Yes, the wellens, Phil.
Yes.
So we'll get an opinion there.
So consequently, they, they do have jurisdiction over this, correct?
Good point, good point.
Right, and if they approve the wetland impacts, it's difficult for, because once the wetlands are impacted, it completely changes the buffer.
Right.
So then it sort of, for us to say you can't impact the buffer, it sort of goes against-
They're the big dog in this, and what we say really has to conform-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, with that.
I, I may, I also had the same concern, because I saw you-
Pull up a little to the microphone, please.
I saw, I had the same concern, because I saw that unit one and unit two were also within the buffer lines. Uh, it's not in the wetlands, but it's within the buffer lines, and so it was a concern for, one, for the property owner and two, also for the, the wetlands itself, but, you know, to imagine, you know, should we have like a major flood, you know, impact and it would impact that property owner and, and then they look at us and like, you've passed this.
Well, we just had some homeowners sitting here telling us about pumping out their, their basements.
Consistently.
Yeah, consistently.
So I would like to, you know, bait, have conditions that, you know, with the DES approving this uh, this, this development and that wetland or wetland buffer.
So that's an interesting question. So can we, can we put a condition, is, I don't know whether we can do that for DES approval?
Oh, we, we never finally approve until we have DES approval.
But, as a, as a cond- okay. Does, does it need to be added as a condition?
You can, if you want to memorialize it. We don't usually, but as staff, we don't usually approve it until, because we can't issue building permits until they have all their state purpose.
Through that process anyways, okay.
There's still checks and balances.
There's still checks and balances, I, I got you. Anything else from the board? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns regarding this application? Yep, come on up, we'll sit you guys back, thank you. Do you sign in?
Yes.
Okay. You can, you can sign in after, just, let's get started here. So if you guys could state your names for the record?
Uh, my name is Rick Murray, I live at seventy-three Shake Road, and we also own the property that, where the water goes.
And my name is Judith Murray, and I own the pro- part of the property where the water goes from Shaker Road to Mountain Road.
And I'm representing my mother, uh, Esther Murray, who owns at ninety-eight Mountain Road, the other side of that drainage ditch. Um, and my name's Brett Murray.
I'm sorry, could you-
Sorry, didn't hear you.
Brett.
Fred.
Brett Murray?
Brett.
Brett, yes.
Brett.
And my mother, Esther, owns the other side, she's eighty-eight years old, so.
Good for her. Great, well, go ahead, the floor is yours.
Okay. Um, we have concerns over, mainly over the water coming our way and uh, that brook where it crosses, the, you know, the drainage is undersized for current conditions. Uh, when it was put in, uh, not the Shake Road, not under Shake Road, but the, the next pipe that starts down for about eighty feet along uh, the other side of Shake Road, uh, back when in nineteen probably fifty-seven or fifty-eight, it was about five, six years old, uh, and uh, the brook used to come out and just flow, meander down through the field and whenever there was a little bit of rain, flooded both sides, the fields on both sides. Um, back at that time, uh, my father uh, had a project and they put in that pipe and dug out this way over, that goes down through open, all the way to, almost to Mountain Road. And the pipe that was buried down below, just before it hits Mountain Road for about a hundred feet, uh, has been in there, I don't know how long, well, well longer than I've been around. Um, and the drainage was always sufficient, um, until probably, I don't know, maybe twenty years ago, whenever the Shake Pines development went in, uh, and they put a retention pond to gather all the water from that development and shove it down our way. It's, you know, a little bit used to come off the land, but not much. And then all of a sudden, it started pouring it and uh, in the spring, it would flood and uh, just about any spring now, you can go uh, a couple times, two or three times, and the water will be full right up over the, the drainage pipe and just pounding down through there as, as fast as it can. And sometimes it just starts backing up and we get flooded down on one or two Mountain Road in the backyard, there's a flood and it floods the cellar down there. That doesn't happen too often now, but uh, every few years it does. And there's been times where it actually floods up to, packs up enough to Shake Road that the water, one year, and I have pictures of it, uh, where it actually started coming out in January, February, onto Shake Road to flood Shake Road. started coming out in January, February, onto Shaker Road, to flood Shaker Road. Um, so even though they're, uh, they have some very, uh, unique and high-tech drainage systems in here, which will pick up a lot of the water and, you know, try to put it back in the ground, uh, just because of the way the, the land is low there, it's not going to drain in that much, and it's going to drain right down the, the upper side there into the, into the area where it goes under Shaker Road, and it's, there's going to be some increased flow, there's gonna be some increase from, uh, the non-drain areas, or the, the entry road, there is no drainage of that area, the surface that's, uh, up there until they get up into, I don't know, is it like the third or fourth unit, where they have, uh, drainage put down. Um, so I'm concerned that it's going to be worse for us, no matter what they do, any, any increase now, uh, even though they meet the, the standards or requirements of the state. Um...
So I'm, I'm interested in, in how, how you think it'll be worse. So if we're putting, if, if they're proposing to put units into higher space, um, or dry space, um, if they're proposing to use retention ponds to make sure that any of the water that does fall on the driveways into the houses is put into retention ponds, that any amount of water that's coming onto that property now, it, it's not that it's adding anything, or it's not that it's channeling anything differently.
Well, that's, that's what they said about, uh, the retention pond, uh, down in Shaker Pines.
Yeah.
And that didn't work, you know? Maybe they have controls, maybe they'll use them to, you know, shut it down and hold it back. But the system is piping everything right down. There's a, the map I have here, and I think the ones you saw, there's a little tiny little, I don't know, well, there's a retention pond, just a place for the water to go across, is another little area, the halfway between the, the, uh, first, uh, s- stormwater management basin and Shaker Road. And you can see coming in, there's a pipe and gravel and gravel, pipe going back out, uh, or maybe just gravel going out and dropping into the brook. But, uh, you know, just, uh, the, the whole area is just saturated to begin with, of, you know, yes, there is some high land. And my thought also, I don't know whether it can be done, the engineers would have to know that, uh, that first retention pond way back and all the collection up on that end, uh, could be piped back to the back wetlands. It should be able to, the way the, you know, 'cause there, it comes down, the wetland, it comes up to a hill, and that hill going down the other side, it could drain that.
In theory, it'll come right back down, though, right?
Yeah.
So any, any concerns, any concerns other than drainage?
Um...
Water?
Well, kinda concerned that they have to impact that much wetlands, and they, you know, I'm not sure how much contact, uh, my sisters talk to, uh, the people that own the area to the south, where they could, uh, could have come back from, I think it's Max Drive, kinda dead ends, and they just have to have an access over a short, short amount of, uh, uh, the next property there to get to where they are, and they would have to cross the brook. But at that section, it's, uh, you know, you can hop across it, it's dry either side, up on dry hills. So there'd be very little, almost no wetland impact up there. Um, I'm not sure how much, uh, they've talked to Mr. Wilson about accessing through, you know, getting a piece of his property off, 'cause he's tried to develop the whole place with boffin during past years. Um, so, yeah, they may have tried, but just because they can't get it or don't have enough mon, don't wanna pay enough money for the land to get across, to whatever the reason is, I'm not gonna, you know, get into that point. Uh, there are other ways to access it. Um, oh, it should be. Uh, and there was also a lot of comments made about, uh, limited wildlife out there. That's one of the heaviest populated areas of wildlife. I hunt, I've shot deer, bear, there's moose out there, fox, coyote, turkeys, you know, you name it. It's, uh, heavily populated, not sparsely populated, believe me. Um, and, uh, I also, I'm not sure I have an answer, it's, I guess it's a question, the retention ponds on the north side, they are, you know, pretty much half of them or most of them laying in that buffer zone before the property line. Is that an allowable use? I thought the buffers was not supposed to be touched at all.
Well, that's part of the application processes. If, if they're touching the buffers, they've gotta, they've gotta get approval to do it.
Well, that's, that part isn't impacting the wetlands, per se. They're just putting their retention ponds there. I'm not, do they, isn't that, uh, it's, it's not the wetlands buffer I'm talking about, just the, what, what do you call the side, side impact areas? Anybody building can't, can't get close to the property line in the front, back, or sides.
Right, with buffer.
Yeah, it is a buffer. Uh, I was wondering, is that an allowable use for that area?
I'm sure it's...
To build anything on it?
Sure it's not within the property line buffer, you mean, for the next adjoining property? No, I'm sure...
Right up to Ralph Wilson's side.
It wouldn't be on there if it was inside that buffer, or they'd be asking for relief.
Have they asked for relief on that, or?
To my knowledge, no.
I'm sorry, for what? The perimeter buffers?
Perimeter, perimeter buffers, no. So they're within, inside the, they're inside the limits.
They're inside the limited area? It shows...
There's no, there's no buffer intrusion on the property line for, for the prop, for the property or for the retention ponds that they're asking for.
Okay, that line that goes down through the middle of the...
The retention pond does go through it, but they, they are allowed to have stormwater systems within the perimeter buffers.
Okay, that was my question. I didn't know where...
No buildings, but they're allowed to have stormwater systems within the buffer.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's fine. Uh, beyond that, uh, I guess just another general question, uh, they're gonna dig up Shaker Road to put the city, um, water and sewer in, extend it up there. Uh, what's gonna happen? How are they going to allow people through to Shaker Road School, as a ton of people coming up there on a daily basis? How are they gonna address that, other than...
I don't know. I mean, I, yeah, that's the city, that'll be the city, that'll be the, the city controlling how they do one lane traffic. They'll stop you and make you wait and go around the, the digging as they're digging up the road.
Sounds like it's gonna have a, a large impact on that.
Yep.
You know, the coming and going. And, uh, and a lot of the questions and concerns, but I really don't need to be addressed. Uh, if you got something to...
Okay, I guess, um, and my name is Judy Murray.
Yep.
Uh, one, one concern, major concern, was when this whole project started, we were never notified that anything was going on. And I noticed in the, uh, board meeting on February sixteenth, that there was a question from, or a comment from Counselor Pierce, that, uh, the item be pulled from consent because there were two, there were many discussion items that were, he has discussed with the neighborhood. He has questions relative to the site, wetlands, traffic, and whether there has been communications with neighbors from the developers.
That was for the Abbott Road project.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I'm wondering, in view of that, why was there never any communication with neighbors on Shaker Road project?
Notice, notice would have been given once the, once the project came to the city and was presented to the city. So you should have received notice as in a butter, if you were in a butter, uh, on the, on the project, once it's brought forward to the city.
Okay. I did not, or we did not receive anything on that first, first meeting. We did receive something on the second meeting, but I don't know, does that mean we're in a butter, or?
No, the first meeting is more of a procedural meeting to allow us to determine the application complete. So when the, when the applicant comes in, provides all the information to the city, gives them all the information, and the city says, "Okay, yes, we can do it." They bring it to the board. The board determines the application complete, sets the public hearing for the next month's meeting, and then notices go out that, that, that you've noticed. Now, for whatever reason, somebody on the Abbott Road project was aware of the, the, aware of the project prior to that, because they knew the developer, and then they started talking about it, and the, and the people got involved, uh, earlier in the process, and they came to the meeting last month saying, "We wanna talk," but again, it was the same thing. It was a procedural thing. All we needed to do was determine the application complete, and then they came to this meeting. So they, you didn't miss anything.
Okay.
I guess in the long run, you didn't miss any public notice, you didn't miss any, anything as far as being able to, to speak about it.
Okay, so, I mean, is there any reason why the developer wouldn't talk to us and discuss what he's doing?
There's no need, there's no need to. I mean, it, I mean, it certainly could have if they wanted to, but there's no requirement for them to, to knock on doors and say, "We're gonna put in a unit, what do you think?" Or, "We're gonna put in a development, what do you think?" So, they don't have to do that, no.
Okay. All right, um, and then, can you just explain to me, what is development of regional impact?
So developments of regional impact involve areas where we're close to other boundaries in other cities or towns. So if we were close to Canterbury and, and we were putting in, uh, interchange development, and, and they wanted to do some major work to roadways and things like that, it's determined a, a development of regional impact, so it may impact the traffic, it may impact whatever in that particular case. You heard one earlier, if you're here, for Gaponi Mazda.
Yes.
That was, was a determination that, that it was a development of regional impact, because it's over the Pembroke Aquifer, so they had to be noticed, and then they would have gotten their notice. They would have been able to publicly state their opposition or their approval of that project.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Sure. Those are easy questions.
Well, I hope I have a few easy questions here. Um, okay, and then, now, when they had the Conservation Commission meeting on, in February, um, they went through some whole discussion, that was, no, you didn't, you didn't go to that. You went in, in March, right?
They didn't address it, 'cause they didn't...
Okay, and then, um, they ended up rescheduling things to March, and then that's when my brother went to that meeting, but they never voted on anything.
Right.
Because they didn't have a quorum.
Yep.
Um, but is it, is it normal that you wait until, I mean, that you, that everything's done kind of haphazard? It seems like one, one group is doing this and one group's doing that, and it's not clear, you know, who we need to talk to and when we need to talk to them, uh, to find out how we get our questions addressed.
So, I, I mean, not haphazard in the sense that it's a very procedural-driven, very, uh, very process-driven. So every application's treated the same, whether it's a, a two-unit subdivision, or a forty-unit subdivision, or a three-hundred-unit apartment building. It goes through the same process and the same, uh, the same processes within the city, and then the Conservation Commission and the zoning and, and the, 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 the application goes through review for fire and safety and code and for all of the things that happen and all those checkmarks go. The City Planner's Office is, is certainly available to answer questions regarding the process, so if something happens, what's the process for it? But it's a very regimented, uh, process, and they go through it every single time with every single application. So the Conservation Commission not having a quorum, unfortunately, I think you heard the applicant say that, that the person who represents the applicant is on the Conservation Commission, so it created a conflict, so they recuse themselves, which knocks out the person for, for, for a quorum. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a problem, but it's, it's a, it's, it's, you know, it's unfortunate that they didn't get a chance to hear it, but...
Right.
Uh, it doesn't slow it down. That's what I said before, I asked about before, and still, Department of, of Envir, the, the Environmental Department at the state will have a say as well on anything that impacts the buffers and, and, you know, has a say in the final approval, so...
Okay, do they have a public hearing also?
That I don't know.
They are not required to have a public hearing, so it's presented before them, their advisory, but it's not noted as a public hearing. It's on the agenda, which is publicly available, but their public hearing is the planning board. So they provide recommendations to the planning board, but the decisions are made by the planning board.
That's Conservation, that's Conservation, just a block in state.
Oh, state?
State.
I'm sorry, state, um, they take in, they don't have hearings, so it's run very differently. It's procedurally reviewed within their offices. They don't have a board that reviews their applications. There, there's somebody assigned within Department of Environmental Services. They send out a butter's notifications. You can reach out to them to review the documents, and you can provide public comment, but it's not, it's a written comment. It's not a forum like this.
Did you, did you say they send out a butter's notice?
I believe they send out a butter's notification.
Haven't seen anything on...
Well, once it goes through us.
It doesn't come through us at all.
But they won't send it...
Wetlands applications do not come through the city at all.
No, but I'm saying their, their notification to the butters, it hasn't, hasn't been made at least as far as...
No, they would, they would. They notice it, they should. We can have, um, the applicant address that, but I believe as part of their submittal of their wetlands permit, they're required.
And they do, they do take public input in writing, you know?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, but it's just not in a forum like this.
Okay. All right.
There's just different jurisdiction for different things, so it does seem a little jumbled, but it's...
Um, all right, in, in terms of, of these systems that are supposed to absorb the water, 'cause our major concern is what happens when the water flows out of the development? And is it gonna be another situation where we're gonna have the same problem that they had when, when Shaker Pines, Shaker Pines, right?
It's just, yeah, it's gonna just be exonerated, Paul, because anymore, what's gonna, uh...
Yeah, so, um, so when everything comes down through and we, and it comes to the culvert that goes under Shaker Road, which comes out on our property, um, then that, that's gonna end up flooding more. And then when, once it floods, it's gonna go down through the field, and then it comes to another culvert, and then because it won't be able to fit through the other culvert, then you're gonna have water flowing onto our property and onto Esther's property. So, uh, what considerations do you take into account? I mean, are they just going to turn around and automatically dig up Shaker Road and put a bigger culvert in and, and have the culvert then create a problem that goes all the way down to Mountain Road? Or how will that all be addressed?
That's what we're here to find out.
Yeah.
And we are open, I've made comments to people, I'm sure nothing would ever happen. We are open if they want to increase the culvert in the Shaker Road, uh, and want to increase the culverts on our side all the way down through to Mountain Road. They can come on our private property and do that, but, uh, um, you know, we just don't wanna be flooded out.
Yeah, okay.
And, and my comment, of course, is, is with the, uh, water issue as well. But I can make, uh, as somebody who grew up in that area, uh, and used to like to dig holes, I can, I can, uh...
Didn't have to dig far to find water, right?
I can attest to one of the issues that they have. It's not just the water. One of the reasons the water doesn't go down here is if you dig down somewhere between a foot and four, five feet, you're gonna hit a layer of, um, hardpan. That is, anywhere from, oh, probably eight or ten inches to, uh, three or four feet thick, and the water just doesn't go through it.
Yep.
And so it stays up there. That's why they're gonna have issues with the retention ponds, because the retention ponds aren't gonna allow it to seep into the aquifer. It's just gonna sit there until it finally seeps out of the retention pond, slides under Shaker Road and comes up on our side. Uh, and that's, that's part of the issue. Um, and, uh, if they were to do something like, uh, add to the culverts down through and past Mountain Road, they also gotta keep in mind that there is a further downstream issue. There are culverts, uh, in that sandbank that runs along ninety-three, where they dug it out when they originally built ninety-three. There's a culvert down there that's only a foot through, and there's a culvert going under ninety-three as well, where this water eventually goes.
Okay. Any questions for the Murray's? Yes.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, thank, first of all, thanks for coming out and testifying, and, and, uh, Ms. Murray, it was very nice to talk to you today.
Thank you.
Right now, when, when, when your property floods, does it cause any flooding in, in your, in your basements or structures?
Yes.
It does?
Yeah, it floods the cellars, uh...
The septic runs twenty-four hours a day.
And the septic, okay, all right, all right. Good, that's, that's, and is, is there any, uh, other use of the property that, that is denied by the flooding? You know, in other words, is there anything you would do with the property? Uh, because we saw the visual of the lots. We saw the lots earlier, uh, in the, uh, Google Earth, uh, pictures, and, so I can see that they're deep lots and that your, your houses are actually at the opposite end of the lot.
Yeah, the houses are on...
Right.
Right, so what I'm, my, my, my second part of my question was, is there any use of the intervening land that you're denied because of the flooding?
Well, the, the... Well, the tenants on our property cannot, they usually have, you know, screen houses out there and...
Okay.
Uh, spend a lot of time outside, you know, anytime it's good weather.
All right, so these are rental properties, and people use them for recreation?
Ours is now.
On our side, but...
And ours is yours.
On my side, it's my mother. Um, we always used to have a garden over there that, you know, got very wet at certain times of the year. Uh, in some ways, it was good. We didn't have to water as much. In other ways, um, yeah, we got some drowned peas several years in a row, but, um, but, uh, the, um, you know, my mother's eighty-eight years old now. It's not an issue with the garden at this point, but...
Yeah.
Somebody else buys that property, they might have that issue.
Right. My mother-in-law used to garden, too. She's gonna be ninety-two in May, so, yeah, but she doesn't do that anymore.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
And our rental property, when it does flood in the cellar, the people have all their laundry stuff down there that gets flooded out, and as well as, you know, hot water heaters, furnaces, and everything else. There's no, uh, there's no sump, ump or anything in there. We'd have to put that, and if it continues, it gets worse, but, uh, usually floods are fairly short in time.
Okay, any other questions for the Murray's?
Oh, excuse me, and just one more comment. And when it does overflow like that, it affects the entire lawn between the two properties.
Yeah.
So...
Okay, thank you very much for your testimony.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else wish to address this application? Yeah, come on up. Hi there, welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
My name is Sarah Morrison, and I live at fifty-nine Shaker Road, which is, um, right beside the properties that these folks were talking about. Um, I'm not gonna belabor this, because it's getting late, um, but I've lived there for about twenty-one years. because it's getting late, um, but I've lived there for about twenty-one years and for the majority of that time, um, I had to have a basement system put into my basement because of the water that was coming into my basement, so my sump pump runs probably between six and eight months of the year, throughout the winter, many times, um, there's a rare occurrence when it's dry enough for it not to, so that, as was said, is very saturated area, I appreciate the work that these guys have done to try to mitigate that and really think about it and be thoughtful about it on the property, so my purpose for being here is really just to echo that and just to really be thinking about that drainage and what needs to happen so that all of those downstream effects don't happen and I don't have more water to pump out of my basement.
Great, any questions? Morrison? Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions or concerns? No? Alright, we'll invite the applicant back up.
Zeros. That helps.
Okay, so you heard loud and clear, there's some concerns with garbage drainage downstream from the, uh, the subject property here, if you wanna give us some thoughts on, on existing conditions and, and conditions that may be there if, if approved.
Yep, um, drainage is the big, is the big concern out here, we know that, um, I think that, uh, it's hard to, um, properly relay, uh, information when we know we're doing hydraulic analysis and hydraulic studies and we do have other experts reviewing that, there is a back and forth process, um, I know the city engineering department has been reviewing it and they're very critical of the designs, um, they've had two sets of comments that have come to us and we still have some more things to address, um, we're trying, uh, to make sure we design, uh, this so that it does meet all the city requirements so that we're not asking for any waivers from drainage, uh, the city has requirements, uh, for both peak flows and volume of runoff, uh, and so does the state, I think we've talked about the, uh, wellands permit, but we also do have an alteration of terrain permit through the state, um, which is also another opportunity to comment, um, they don't have a public hearing, uh, but there's obviously opportunities to provide any comments to the state on our, our state permits, uh, they look at larger storm events, um, even, uh, so they'll be doing the same review that the city is doing, we will need to receive that permit, and all of this is an effort to make sure that we are not, uh, increasing the flow and having adverse impact on the downstream of Butters' neighbors, clearly this is already an existing, uh, issue, I wish that I had the, um, the knowledge, uh, that these neighbors have, um, going back decades, um, I can't point a finger at a adjacent subdivision and tell you that that's the cause of something that happened there, uh, I have a lot of experience analyzing these types of things and, um, you'd be amazed at the number of things that can happen in the middle of the woods that can change drainage patterns, a fallen tree, um, a, a beaver is a big one, I don't think there's any beavers out here, um, maintenance, road maintenance, I'm not gonna point the finger at the city here, but in lots of places it's just, you know, lack of maintenance of culverts can cause the water start going a different way.
Shaker Pines facility.
I don't know out here, it's interesting on this one, um, you know, we do have this well in the back of the property and, uh, the chair alluded to it, that does drain right back out into this brook, it comes right back down here, uh, so no matter where we, uh, outlet our detention basins, it's going to come down to this, this low point.
So, the point, what point was made on hardpan and, and the, are you getting it through?
Yeah.
Are you getting it through to the sandy soil, it's gonna love it and absorb it and push it somewhere else?
Yeah, we have test pits all throughout here, we have test pits along the center line of the road and in our detention basins, which we're required to do for, for the state permits, it's pretty good soil up in here, it's much different than it is down in the lower parts and I suspect that across the street where it's flat and mucky in here, it's definitely high water table, hardpan, uh, it's a much better material up here where there's some gnolls in the property, we were actually very surprised at, at what we saw for material back there, expecting it to be much worse than it was, so we do have the opportunity to provide some infiltration, uh, in these areas.
Hang on, just one sec.
Yeah.
Mr. Murray, do you know when the, uh, the, um, Shaker Pines, uh, development was put in, how many years ago?
Not exactly, but I'd say probably at least twenty.
Twenty-plus years ago, I was gonna say probably twenty years ago, um, how, how much has changed, I mean, I know a lot's changed and a lot more focus and attention is being put on re, not just retention, but moving this water and making sure that, I'm, I'm sensitive to the fact that it's wet now and we can't fix that, that it's wet now, but I don't want it to be any wetter with this development.
Oh, yeah.
So, my concern is, is, is it, is it, the, the amount of water that's going through that undersized culvert, it's no more water that's gonna go through than it, than it would've happened normally, and Mr. Murray's point is, is well taken, that, you know, maybe things were different twenty-plus years ago and I'm sure they were, but it was kinda build them and people will come and, you know, we don't really care about the water and how we handle it at that point, I think.
Yeah, well, I, you know, they do have detention basins there.
Yeah.
I can't comment on if those are working effectively, if the design was flawed, I don't know, I mean, it's not something that we're gonna be able to figure out, I guess what I was gonna say is that, that very well could be the case, you know, I don't know, um, there's other things that, that could be causing additional runoff to come their way, I was gonna just point out very quickly, I don't wanna fall to, get too deep into this with, with you folks, but there is a, um, there is a, the welland kinda comes down here and the, there's a mainstream channel, that's the one we've been talking about, but what's interesting about this is there's this other welland that comes down here and actually goes on to the neighbor's property, which I believe is Ms. Morrison's property right here, oh no, you're back further out, so it's the house right here, the, but there's a, um, there's a, the welland extends down to here and there's actually a, another culvert right here that connects into the city municipal system, storm drain system, and then flows south into Shaker Road, so some of this water can back up from that, if that culvert gets plugged, then the water's backing up right into our same welland, and guess where that water's going, it's going downstream in our direction, it's very, I mean, these are very close in elevation, so all it takes is one little thing here and, you know, if that's not maintained, if that gets plugged up, then there's all this water that's supposed to be coming here that all of a sudden is gonna come here, I mean, uh, uh, you know, I'm not making it up, if a log falls in the woods and all of a sudden the water starts, can start going a different way, I mean, it's the same reason rivers jump, you know, um, drainage patterns change, I'm not saying that's what, what it is here, you know, I tend to, if we have people who have lived there for decades, I, you, I tend to rely on that, that, that testimony, so it's, it's very important to, to take that for, for, for what it is, uh, is, you know, eyewitness testimony, um, we wanna get this right, I think that the ci- engineering department still has some, some comments they have for us, what we wanna be able to tell you folks and have, you know, have confidence in saying is that we're meeting the requirements, we're doing everything that we can, I don't think the city engineering department's gonna sign off on it until they're confident that we're meeting all the requirements and doing everything that we can, um, and that's, that's kinda where we're at and I would leave it with you, I'd encourage you to ask, you know, questions of Mr. Cedarholm who's here tonight, uh, we've spoken, uh, staff has, you know, we have not had any direct contact with the Murray's, but their concerns have been relayed to us and they're, they're very much what I would've expected to hear from them based on my analysis of this drainage just su- situation out there, um, so we do wanna get it right, I'm happy to meet with anybody out there, uh, from the city and the neighbors, just to make sure we have all of the, uh, you know, information before we button this up, um, but from, from your perspective, I want you to be, to assure you that we are meeting the requirements of both the city and the state, we, we cannot increase the, the runoff, uh, to the downstream properties, by no means are we solving the, the problem that they have today, um, I think that, uh, Mr. Murray properly alluded to the, the correct solution here would be to upgrade the culverts that run, uh, under Shaker Road and across his property, um, it would take something like that to ultimately solve this, this problem that exists on the property, but then you're creating that other problem, which they also mentioned, now you have different downstream people on the other side of Mountain Road, I have no idea what's down there, I mean, at some point you get to the river, but, you know, this is the, this is a problem that a lot of municipalities have, where they wanna upgrade a, a culvert 'cause there's a drainage problem, you can't just do that without affecting the downstream people, so, um, it's a tricky situation, we need to make sure we're getting it right, I think we're trying, I, I, I know we're trying to do that and we'll, and we'll continue to, to work on that, um.
Okay.
That, I mean, most, I think that's most of the issues.
Yep, I think that's probably the issues, any questions from the board? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, it's getting late, so let's, uh, let's look at this, uh, any other follow-up from staff, any other comments, questions, concerns you guys have?
Nope, um, I mean, drainage is pretty much the biggest issue.
It is, it's.
Um, if you, you know, I have talked to the applicant about this, if you don't feel comfortable, you approving it tonight pending additional discussions with the neighbors and looking at the plans, um, continuing to next month for more information, um, or if you wanna.
Does that screw you up? I would really like to hear from the Conservation Commission, even advisory, I'd like to, I think we've heard enough tonight to get an understanding, but.
Okay.
Um, again, no more water out of that property is the, kinda the benchmark and I wanna get a good understanding that, that that's, that that's what's gonna happen, I don't know, yes, David?
Um, just, what, what is your expectation, uh, regarding, uh, the environmental pe- the state people?
Well.
Uh, where does that?
I don't wanna say that it's a rubber stamp and I, and I don't know the process that they go through, but I know from our Conservation Commission and I've been to enough meetings that it's, it's, it's a good review, I mean, it's a, it's an advisory for us and we use it as a, as an advisory, but I'm not a conservation person, I'm not a, I mean, I'm not a conservation person, I'm not, I don't know it like, like they do, as far as being able to look at these things and understand them, know it like Carol does, look at it and understand it, know it, and, and maybe advise on it as far as, hey, this swale could be this, or this swale could do this, or why didn't you think of it this way, I think they've probably put a lot of time and effort into it, but again, we put those advisories in place to, to give us the information to make the decisions and I, I just feel like we need one more set of eyes looking at it before we make a final decision.
But they're just going, they're just going to advise us.
They're just gonna advise, they're gonna say we.
Okay.
We, we don't have any problems with it, or hey, we recommend that they do this, this and this.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dave.
I'm sorry, 'cause a question, what's your timeline with DES, are you at their, have you heard from them at all?
We just received, we just received alteration terrain comments, uh, we have not heard from wetlands yet, so.
Okay.
So that won't screw you up for me.
So we may have more information from DES between meetings.
So, we're on that track anyway.
Right.
So, I'd like to propose that we table it, we've heard the public.
Continue.
Table?
Continue.
Continue, not table, so continue, we will close the public hearing for tonight?
For tonight?
And continue to.
And continue to the next meeting.
April twentieth.
So, we do need a motion to do that, if there's any concerns or questions or comments about it, I'm happy to hear those, but if there isn't, we've got a motion and a second on the table, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so just for the record, so, we will get information back, um, we'll have you come back in, uh, public's welcome to come back in as well, we'll open the public hearing again, but we're, we don't need you to go through all the details, we just need you to, to, to address any of the comments, concerns that come from either DES or from Conservation Commission, right?
Thank you.
Perfect, great.
And can you connect with the neighbors?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So we don't wanna hear H, HF, H, A, E. Come on, come on, sorry, delay you guys any longer, so thank you for your patience.
Everybody wanna take a stretch?
Yeah, no.
Oh, man, I'm with you.
Duff and Jacks, baby.
We'll get a, we'll get a staff update and let everybody stretch and have a good.
Uh, we need it.
Your break?
I just wanted to stand up for a second, I've been squirming.
And again, see, we've, we've been through this with you guys, so we're he- we're here to kinda just dot the i's and cross the t's and.
Appreciate your efforts.
Yeah, well.
Cheers as well.
Okay, do you want me to read this to the record? Are we ready?
Uh, yeah, and again, just for the record, uh, we did the whole dog and pony show last month and, uh, I shouldn't say that, that's terrible, you guys put a lot of money and effort, that was terrible, I apologize.
We'll bring dogs and ponies.
I apologize.
That means a return.
We went through a, a detailed presentation last month.
Yes, we did.
We had similar questions, you see a pattern here sometimes, but, uh, sometimes we make decisions and move, sometimes we, we look for additional information and last month was one of them, so we'd, we'd kinda, uh, continued it, so we will open the public hearing again and welcome you guys back to the table, if you could state your name for the record?
Do you want me to read this?
We don't have any drainage issues, do we? Just for the record, just.
No, we don't.
I don't think we do, okay, so, yeah.
Laurie Rosio.
Yeah.
Interchange Development.
David Rosio, Interchange Development.
I'm Jason Hill with TF, TF Moran.
Great, okay, we could get a.
You don't have a floor at this point?
Oh, where is everybody?
The bathroom.
Okay, so we'll. You should've set a break, Laurie.
I did say break.
You should not have set a break.
You gave permission.
I did, that's fine.
They took advantage of it.
That's for you.
So we'll hold tight for just a second, sorry.
They might be in there for a while.
Yeah.
They're falling asleep.
Not coming back.
They might.
There is a bed.
They might be. There's a bed in the men's room.
In the women's room.
In the women's room.
There is.
The door.
And then there.
All right, so again, welcome to the table, welcome back, we've, uh, had you guys state your names already for the record and let's get a quick staff update on this and where we stand.
I don't even know, um, so we are, uh, the returning last month comprehensive development plan, um, there was some concerns, they're back tonight, we're only talking about the CDP amendment that addresses this proposal, last month, we, I think we confused things by showing a future condition, we've removed that from the equation at this point, just to make it clear, at this point, they're gonna be addressing other issues on that and that's probably gonna take a little while, so, so not to slow this, um, down, so, they've addressed some of the pedestrian connected, um, issues, we did have additional comments, but I think they're, um, able to be addressed, engineering has not had an opportunity to complete their review of, um, the resubmission, so I just wanna put it out there, we do have it as a condition of approval, that they meet all engineering comments, but those are not before you tonight, so, I did make the applicant aware, they are comfortable with conditional approval, if they're not able to meet engineering comments, then they would have to come back before the board, but just to move this forward, um, we feel confident that we can address it on a staff level.
Okay, great, alright, so welcome to the table, if you guys could just fill us in on the blanks and we will move forward.
Okay, so here's a quick overview of the site for anyone who's unfamiliar with this development, this is the Interchange Development Concord Crossing Project, um, it's been before you, Phase One, a few times, we're looking at this site in the central portion, which is, uh, consistent with the Phase Two of the project, Phase One has been partially completed, which includes, um, the neighboring supermarket, uh, New Hampshire Liquor and Wine Outlet, uh, at the north central portion, and existing Extramart gas station, uh, at the southeast quadrant of the, uh, Hoyt Road and Whitney Road intersection, and then a Wendy's fast food restaurant to the, um, due west of this proposed project, um, we are proposing, I'm just gonna blow up the blow-up view of the site plan, we're proposing to construct a mixed-use commercial building, which consists of a twenty-six-seat, uh, fast food restaurant at the north in this position, uh, unspecified retail space, uh, in the center portion of the building, that's twenty-seven hundred and fifty square feet, and then a twenty-five hundred square feet, square foot branch bank with drive-through, uh, two drive-through lanes at the southern, uh, end of the site, uh, there'll be a proposed, uh, main access drive opposite the existing driveway to the adjacent retail pad, uh, in this position, we have a two-way drive consisting of thirty-six parking spaces, uh, in the center of the site, which will, uh, ultimately be, uh, joined with a future development, uh, once that is known, uh, to the, uh, east, and then again, we have a, the, the drive-through lane here, well, the, the access to the drive-through occurring here with a bypass lane around the back and then a planned future to, connection to an adjacent, uh, development site to the south in this location, so, but this development will not build that, that secondary access point until that's obviously finalized and known better, uh, how that, uh, develops. We have a proposed sidewalk connection on the north side of the site with ADA access to the, uh, the development, which will access the existing, and for Merchants Way has sidewalk, Merchant's Way is this east-west road, main entrance to the facility, sidewalks on both sides. This will make a connection to the southern sidewalk off Merchant's Way through this area. And then secondly, we have a sidewalk connection to a proposed, at this point will not be constructed in the future, there's an ADA accessible cross-country sidewalk network, which meanders through the site, linking the development sites. So there's a planned future connection there. And then we have finally to the patio, proposed small patio area for the Jersey Mike's restaurant to the north of the restaurant.
Has that entrance been reworked, the sidewalk and the little area? So that all looks different than what we saw as well.
Correct.
That's much more appealing, just from a, just from an aesthetics perspective than what was there last time. So great job on that. It looks much better.
Thank you. Yeah, so that was reworked. This plan shows, that's mainly the scope of the work. We are proposing a conditional use permit to construct 36 spaces at this point where it would require 44. However, based on the planned future build-out and the linkages to the adjacent parking facilities and for other reasons, I've submitted in writing within the CUP, I've submitted that we're respectfully asking for that conditional use permit. And then finally, I'm going to just, I was going to show the architecture if anyone, if you all have in your packages the proposed architecture, but I was going to load that architecture so you can see the aesthetic and this.
I don't think the chairman has it in his package.
I actually do. I found it because it appropriately says elevations and I clicked on it. It doesn't say supplemental number two and down below at the 270.
That's how we test you to make sure you look at everything.
I read it, but I don't remember. All right, go ahead. Take me off the hook here.
Here we go. This is the main front door aesthetic from looking west from the parking lot, having, you know, this tower, credit union tower. That'll be like a veneer, flatstone finish with some ephist trim or along the edge, and then there's some upgraded architectural, really they're composite finishes for the Jersey Mike's and this retail pad site for the entryway. It's like a composite finish. It's been reviewed with the architectural design review committee with some minor suggestions, and this is just a, just the plantings are actually designed to, this graphic shows the proposed, it's coordinated with our proposed landscape design, so that the shrubbery and the, some of the trees you can see there is actually matching with what we're proposing. We have additional landscaping around the perimeter of the parking area and such, but that's a general overview of the project.
That Jersey Mike's sign looks understated. It looks kind of, I mean, it's great, but it looks, it looks great. It fits in nicely. It does not look this big giant neon sign blinking, so it looks great. All right, questions, comments, concerns? So the piece that's before us...
So you have...
Is the comprehensive development plan amendment, correct?
And then the smeech. So if you approve that, then move on to the rest.
So any questions for the applicant? Yes? No? Again, I think all of the, I checked, you checked the boxes that I was looking for when we had, when we looked at this before, so appreciate that. So just for the record, planning board granted comprehensive development at their December 19th, 2018 meeting as part of the minor subdivision approval. An amendment, an amended CDP was approved by the board in 2020 as part of the major site plan. Sorry, I'm scrolling through here. Approved for the liquor store, the grocery store, and again on September 15th, 2021, as part of the major site plan approved for Wendy's fast food restaurant. The application, the applicant has again submitted a revised CDP to account for the revised layout of the building and revised CDP materially changes the intent layout of the site. Staff met with the applicant on several occasions, provided approval of the initial CDP to come up with a layout and approved safe pedestrian environment with the character similar to the traditional neighborhood development connections between the buildings. The proposed revisions associated with the next phase of the development changed the character of the vehicular orientation strip development. So I just wanted to read that into the record. I think, again, I think, I'm guessing Heather wrote that, but I think the...
I wrote it.
You wrote it?
Did you?
Give me some credit.
Well, I was just, the tone, it's going the tone.
It's lame.
That wasn't a shot at you. That was a shot at Heather, who I'm sure is watching.
She's sound asleep.
She's sound asleep.
I know.
Wait, are you okay?
Right through the wringer. So I think, again, I personally, I think it addresses a lot of the issues and does give it a little bit more of a scale that we were looking for. So we've got an amendment before us to accept the comprehensive development plan amendment as submitted.
Correct, if that's what you would like to do.
As submitted. If someone would like to make a motion to approve that comprehensive development plan amendment as submitted. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No? And so moves on to 3.1. Yes, sorry.
Four point, four point two.
It's 3.3 conditional use. So that's why it's in my...
That's the recommendation. Is there really?
Nobody wants to be never done this.
There's pluses and minuses.
Section six.
Goes right through.
Where are you?
He's mixed up.
Did you open last month's?
I think he, I think he was reading from the prior.
Interchange Development report. Additional use permit, that's what I just read.
And then there's recommendations.
Recommendations in six. Oh, it starts at six and it goes to 4.1. Come on, you're killing me.
This is a test, Rich.
All right, under recommendation, so we did the vote.
Do you notice how many reports I had to write this month?
We did the, we voted on the amendment for the comprehensive development plan, so we'll move on to 4.2. Grant architectural design review approval for the site plan building elevation subject to the applicant providing additional lighting for the dumpster area. Good with that? Okay, so grant, so would someone like to make a motion to grant architectural design review as so eloquently outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 4.3 is to grant approval of the conditional use permit in accordance with section 28.711B for the zoning ordinance to allow for construction of 36 spaces where 44 are required. Someone like to make a motion to grant that approval of conditional use permit. That motion's been made in second. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and, what does it say? If grant?
You did, you did open, yes.
Oh, okay.
Is it grant? What's that say?
Oh, it was supposed to say if CDP was, approval was granted.
So under 4.4 since the CDP was approved.
Since it was granted. Wow.
Let's go to grant, major site plan approval for the 6,750 square foot multi-tenant building with a drive-through precedent conditions, A, 1 through 4, subsequent conditions, B, 1, 2, and 3. Would someone like to make a motion to grant major site plan as outlined? Motion's made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you for your patience, and again, I hope it didn't screw you up, but I feel much more comfortable with what we saw.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, want to do a zoning code update?
Yeah, Heather should have a presentation to give.
We're not really doing it, are we?
No, so I don't have to put the slides up. I can just tell you what it is. So the next phase, Phase Two zoning update, they're starting the web conferences. I don't know if she's reaching out to you individually, but the schedule is for initial education phase of the next phase where they will be doing web conferences. So I don't know if this will be Zoom or something, where Code Studio will be leading different focus groups. So March 29th from 12 to 1:30 PM is the first one, and that is targeted more towards consultants and people that are working in the industry during the workday. And then that evening, March 29th, 7 to 8:30 PM will be public and everybody else, I mean, everybody could come to any of these, but this is going to focus on Fisherville Road in Pennacook. And then March 31st from 7 to 8:30 PM is going to focus on Loudon Road. So it'll be looking at multi-unit...
What time's the 31st?
The 7 PM.
7 to 8:30.
Yep.
Where are they held?
It's going to be online.
Online.
Everything's online.
Will it be recorded?
I don't know. I can find out. I, yeah, I'll find out.
Yeah, I will. I think so, yeah.
Hope so.
Yeah, because they probably put it on their website.
Yeah.
And then on to the city's newsletter, perhaps.
Okay, so March 29th is 12 to 1 is the, or 12 to 1:30.
It's going to look at all focus areas.
Is going to be the, is going to be all focus areas for the industry.
Yep.
And then the 29th from 7 to 8:30 and the 31st from 7 to 8:30.
Yep. And then that's just step two. Step three is going to be design concept. So after they have this from April till June, they're going to be working on that, and they're going to do a community presentation at the end of June. And then they're going to be working on some more focus groups with the planning board and council in early September with drafts completed in October. So that's the current schedule for Phase Two of the zoning updates. So hopefully Heather will be reaching out and sending you all this information, but that was your...
Yes, please, I'd like to make sure that everybody gets an email.
Does that go out on a, you email us?
Just an email, yeah, from Heather. I haven't seen anything, so if we can, that would be great.
Yep.
Okay, I'm sure you had more to talk about, but we'll cut you off. We'll cut you off at 10:35 and we will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.